This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the eastern and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it in silent mode for the duration of the meeting. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Monday, January 27, 2020. Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jennifer Sutter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Pitts.
Here. Okay, can I get a, we have a couple of items. Nothing's changed on the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of December 16, 2020? The special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And Mayor John Moore and Alexis are not, are, so Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry? I'm sorry. Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Sutter?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Pitts.
Yes. All right, we have a number of resolutions that we have to go through, so I ask for your patience for a moment. Is there a first resolution? Is the appointing of the Board Attorney for 2020?
Second.
First.
And you're a motion.
I motioned myself.
And everyone?
Yeah, I think everybody was here at the meeting. This is just a memorialization of the action at the.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion appointing the Board Planner for 2020, CCH?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get a motion for appointing Insight for Board Engineer for 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Get a motion to appoint Board Secretary for 2020, Irene Gasparian.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to for Board Recording Secretary, Stenographer for 2020, State Short End.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And a motion for appointing Board Conflict Planner for 2020, Insight.
Move it.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And a resolution appointing the Board Conflict Engineer, TNM, for 2020.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, before we begin, one other motion. I'd like to get a motion for, to have a three-minute comment session for any public comment.
Move it.
Second.
Question?
For the duration, for the duration of this meeting.
Is that a change in? No? Okay.
No.
As long as it's not a change?
No, it's not a change.
Okay.
Hey, I have a motion by Manzella and a second by Yvonne Clayton. All in favor?
Aye.
And those?
All right. Okay, let's begin with the applications.
I think just as a housekeeping item, there was some exchange of correspondence that occurred on Friday and today. And there was a letter that I delivered in response today dated January 27, which I have copies of if they haven't been distributed. But on Friday, Saw's council requested to add an additional witness to discuss marketing. We submitted a letter today objecting to that request and also asking that they provide the additional information that they promised concerning what Saw is. We did receive today a certificate of formation indicating that the group had formed a limited liability company, but our letter indicates that that is not on its own sufficient under the municipal land use law to convey standing. We asked that additional information be provided to show what interest that Saw has, if any, in their right to use, enjoy, or acquire property in Asbury Park.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mike Sinkovich. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Lieberman today. He's in Florida, and we didn't want to request an adjournment, of course, because we recognize both the Board and the applicants need to move this matter forward. So I can address both of those in turn. I guess going to the first issue, which is our additional witness, it's a fact witness. It's one of the heads of Save Asbury's Waterfront, and she's going to talk about firsthand personal knowledge of marketing that she went through with the Ocean Club and how the Ocean Club was in fact saying that the beach or pool club that were here today would be an amenity that members or owners of the Ocean Club would have exclusive rights to. So that was what we were going to, that was a pro offer for what we would like our witness to testify to. And we believe it goes directly to the issue of whether this is a private or a public club, goes to both the issue of zoning and, of course, what's in the CAFRA permit that we've been discussing a lot about. So I guess that's the first point.
Well, let's argue the motion. Let's talk about the witness.
Sure.
You brought that. Good.
So on that and in the letter that we submitted, we went through the extensive case law that discusses what the Board's jurisdiction is in this context, where in this case you have a conditional use. There's only one condition that concerns access. There's no conditions concerning public or private or membership or any other operational issue. It's just, is this a beach club? And the council has already determined that this plan is consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan. This planning board has jurisdiction to look at the site plan and whether or not it complies with the waterfront redevelopment plan. So in doing so, there's many cases cited in the letter that I submitted that shows you can't look at extraneous information. You can't look at off-site impacts. You can't look at traffic, and you certainly can't look at how marketing is being done. It's simply not within your purview. And this hearing process has already gone on for now, the seventh hearing. There's been ample opportunity for people to cross-examine witnesses. There will be opportunity for people to speak when it comes to public comment. There's no need to have someone else sworn as a witness to talk about the marketing of another property and how that relates to this one. Even if everything you've just proffered is true, it simply has no bearing on your ultimate decision and your ultimate authority under the municipal land use law.
Jack?
Would you like my opinion?
Yeah, I would like your opinion.
Okay. Unless there's something in municipal site plan ordinances and Municipal Land Use Act that says that marketing is a relevance, relevant issue to a site plan application, it's not. And I don't think there is, unless you've got some section of the ordinance or some section of the MLU that I'm not familiar with, which is possible.
Sorry, go ahead.
But insofar as the use of the property, whether it's private, public, beach club, pool club, what have you, the authority having jurisdiction over the use of this property and its consistency with the master, with the, excuse me, the redevelopment plan, is the mayor and council acting in their capacity as the redevelopment agency. This application, from my understanding, according to the resolution and the process, has been properly vetted before them. They in fact passed a resolution that said, if, I'm not going to quote, I think it might be right there, that says that this application complies with the terms and meets the conditions of the redevelopment plan, with the exception of one or two recommendations having to do with fenestration, if I'm correct. So the agency that has the power to say whether or not this use is correct or not correct is them, and they have decided, they've made the decision. So as far as I'm concerned, our task here is to simply look at site plan and decide on the technical ordinances and whether or not the applicant is entitled to the design exception or two that they have applied for under traditional zoning principles. But as far as bringing in any factual witness or any expert witness that has something to say about marketing, I believe that to be irrelevant to what the planning board does.
And just for clarity in the record, I do have a copy of that resolution if you want me to mark it as an exhibit, just so we have it in the record.
We should have it in the record.
This is, it was submitted with the application, but it'll be easy to refer to. It's Exhibit A 53, I think is what we are up to. So I will mark that. Provide a copy to the Board Secretary. And I would like to mark my letter, just because we've now referenced it on the record.
And let's mark the letter from Mr. Lieberman dated January 24 as well.
So my letter.
And keep it all on the record for an appeal or whatever.
My letter, I will mark A 54.
Michelle, is that okay with you?
Yeah, let Michelle take care of that.
So Mr. Lieberman's letter will be marked as O 7. My letter will be A 54, and the resolution of the council dated March 13, 2019 will be A 53.
Can I briefly respond? Sure. I understand and appreciate your points. We do believe that this does go to the ultimate planning issues involved here, a lot of which Mr. Rodriguez already testified to. First, I guess, and foremost, again, I do still believe that it's highly relevant whether this is a public or private beach club or pool club, based on the fact that the CAFRA permit and this master plan, or the redevelopment plans seem to have conflicting requirements therein. Secondly, I apologize. Secondly, I believe that, you know, one of the things that we have consistently said and we will continue to say is that none of the operations, which we believe are necessary as part of this approval, have been discussed, and this will put a little more meat on the bone, if you will, to exactly, you know, how this facility is going to be used, who is going to have access to this facility, and it goes to a lot of our planning criteria as well. So with that, we do believe it's relevant.
My position stands.
So where do we, where do we go from here, Jack?
Which way you want to go?
Okay, so, but this is just to, because there were multiple points made in the letter, so this is just relative to a marketing witness?
Correct.
Not their right to represent?
Yeah, we haven't gotten to that, whether or not they have standing.
Just clarifying.
We'll take that next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, it seems that our Board Attorney has stated that the planning board truly does not have any jurisdiction regarding marketing on a particular, regarding what's on a site, what's being presented on a site plan. Does anyone on the Board feel differently? Because if we concur with that, then that witness will not be heard.
So I'm just going to bring, I'm going to bring up a point. I heard what you said relative to municipal land use law, and I agree. But are we in this saying that the Board has no jurisdiction over marketing, and that includes fair housing, discriminatory practices, everything else? Which may fall under the rights of the federal government, which is fine, but are we saying that that is fully with outside?
I'm only saying that relative to this case. Whether or not fair housing in another setting with another application, that's different. That issue's not before.
Because I would say relative to affordable housing, that falls fully under the purview, and I don't want to relinquish any rights.
No, no, I'm that, but that's not the case here with the pool clubs.
Okay. Just clarifying.
Does any Board member have any difference of opinion? That it does have some impact? Because right now, we're stating that it is not in our jurisdiction.
And we're parsing out that marketing is different from hours of operation. This is just marketing.
Yeah, and even hours of operation. I mean, we can ask the question. All zoning and planning applications go a little far afield of what lawyers would consider relevant. So here and there, little bits, we step over the line, that's normal. That happens with every application. But as far as getting into saying, well, you can't operate between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. at night, no, we would not, that wouldn't be part of site plan.
Okay. I'm comfortable. Is everyone comfortable with that?
I just had a question regarding the comment that was made about public comment. I don't know if this is tied to the second issue regarding representation of the group, but then would that, the person would be able to make comments for, public comment, correct? The person that's being.
Oh, yeah, so far, yeah, but I want to address that separately. I want to, I want to talk all about that, because it's, it's, we've already taken a position on it, and applicant has taken a contrary position. So I'd like to, if you don't mind, if we can keep the issues clean and separate.
Are we okay? All right, so the Board does feel that the, that marketing is not within the jurisdiction, within our, the planning board's jurisdiction for this application? Now, there was a second?
The issue of standing.
Standing. So the second issue, and just to clarify what that issue is, how it's distinct from this one. So under the municipal land use law, it indicates that the testimony, cross-examination shall be permitted to all interested parties, that's the key term, through their attorneys, if represented, or directly, if not represented. So the question has been throughout that we've raised, who is Saw? Who does Mr. Lieberman represent? Because what has been happening is people who are represented by council are then also asking questions, and the municipal land use law does not allow it. If you are represented by council, your attorney speaks for you. You've hired an advocate, your advocate speaks for you. If you are not represented by council, then you have the right of cross-examination on your own. And we do know that throughout the course of this hearing process, many people who have indicated they are members of Saw have not only had Mr. Lieberman act on their behalf, but then have asked questions as well, and that's been drawing the hearings out. We've asked all along, what is, what is Saw? And we know that before December 11, 2019, they were not a legally formed group, but have subsequently filed a certificate of formation for a limited liability company, which is a type of corporate entity here in the state of New Jersey. The municipal land use law, though, requires you to go a step further. It's not just that you've legally formed, but in order to be an interested party, you have to show, and this is in the definition of interested party in Section 4 of municipal land use law, you have to show that you have a right to use, acquire, or enjoy property, and that that right is or may be affected by any action taken in this application. So the question again is, who's being represented here? An LLC or individuals? And if it's the LLC, does that LLC have the right to use or enjoy property here in Asbury Park? And is that right affected? If it's individuals who live in the area, I would argue that, of course, they have standing, but if they're the ones being represented, then they cannot come up and subsequently cross-examine. And I know that we've made this before and put it on the record, but I felt in light of the letter that we received and the certificate of formation, that it was important to put it in writing and make sure it was in the record, which is lengthy here.
May I respond? The first and foremost, it was our understanding that this was an issue that was already decided, discussed at length and resolved by this Board. Second, to that point, just a practical matter, our, now our last witness, Mr. Rodriguez, is, I guess his cross-examination is being finished today. We're at a point here where we don't have another witness to present. So I think in reality, where we are at this late hour in this hearing, we should continue to move forward in the manner that it has been going. I will say, in terms of the actual LLC, that they're a group of residents that live here, that recreate here, that enjoy the beach, that enjoy the rest that Asbury Park has to offer. Their purpose as part of the LLC is to advance those collective interests, and as council knows, as the Board is likely aware, the standard in New Jersey is broad. Yes, it is defined by the MLUL, but it's very, very broad. It goes beyond the 200-foot notice requirement that all of the planning board, that the applicants have to provide to residents. So where we are is, again, this has already been discussed. I believe what's most appropriate is to continue how we have been continuing since we're really at the point where this is almost complete. And we believe that, you know, our LLC, which we have, you know, provided the documentation for, does in fact enjoy property. They have a right, and that right is what is required under the MLUL, and they should be allowed to continue as we have.
I just have some clarifying questions, just for the record and purposes of preservation. Does the LLC itself own any property in Asbury Park?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Does the LLC itself have a contract to purchase any property here in Asbury Park?
I'm not, I'm not sure I should be answering, you know, testimony questions, but I'm not aware. I'm not sure.
Okay. And you're not claiming standing through those purposes?
I'm not claiming standing through the ownership of property, no. I'm claiming that the members of the LLC do own property, do live here, and do recreate. And the LLC, as a separate and distinct entity, does in fact advance those collective interests.
Jack?
I'll stick, originally, I had recommended to the Board, based on 42 years of experience, 25 years representing the zoning board, 20 years representing the planning. Sorry, sorry. I'll talk in misdirection, okay? Based, well, based on, based on that, and based on the judicial interpretation of who has, who's a party of interest, it's always been rather liberal during my career. And based on that, I had said to the Board, look, I'd rather go in the direction of allowing this to happen, only because I don't want it, with that in mind as a background, but also, I didn't want an appeal, and then we get out the freehold, and then a judge says you didn't give adequate opportunity for people to be heard, and then we get a remand, and we're back at this for another six months to a year, which I didn't think would serve anybody's interest, okay? So based on that, and I understand Jennifer's position, and based on the fact that we've already allowed it up to this point, I would say that we should stay the course, and if an error has been made, that we brought up on an appeal, if there is one, and it'll be decided by the courts. But I think we should stay the course exactly the way we've been doing it.
Okay, does anybody on the, on the planning board feel that we should not stay the course? Because at this point, we're being advised that we should stay the course.
I think we had asked, the only thing was is that someone would identify themselves as a member of the group or, or not, just so it's clear who they're representing. So can we stick with that recommendation?
Yeah, we could ask them, okay. Plus, I, I review the certificate of formation. I don't recall the second name on the certificate of formation, but Pam Lamberton, who's a, who I know is a resident of the city, is a member of the organization. So it's not like it's a bunch of outsiders that have come in before the Board. It appears that there are, and council's represented, that the members are in fact city residents. So we get into a very nebulous, foggy area. So I'd rather, if I'm going to make an error, which I don't think I am, but if I do, I'd rather err on the side of caution and not, not create another issue on an appeal.
Is everybody okay with that, the planning board? That we continue on as we have?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're far enough along in the process that we have to.
I agree. I agree. We're far enough along the process. We're going to continue on as we have.
Thank you.
Understood. So with that, I think we're up to calling Mr. Rodriguez back up so I can continue cross-examination.
Yes. Everything else has been marked, the exhibits. Mr. Lieberman's yours, and so on. Jack?
May I just say one other thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to, just wanted to mention for the record that there are many seats still available in this room, so everyone has been, that wants to get in, has been allowed to get in.
Jack, also? Yes, and for the record, should have said this in the beginning, but better late than never, two members who were not here last month have in fact signed certifications that they listened to the recording and reviewed the exhibits in last month, and they are Rick Lambert and Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton. And we have their certifications. I've given them to the Secretary. I've acknowledged their signatures. Let's place them into the record as well.
I think the other ones were actually marked as B exhibits originally.
Yeah, Board is, whatever, make it 001, 002, something like that. Just as long as we don't give it the same, we don't conflict with any other exhibits.
Right, 001 and 002.
Right, today's date, we should be good.
27th.
Counsel, how do you spell your last name?
Sinkovich. It's S-I-N-K-E-V-I-C.
Thank you. Okay, ready?
Okay. And just make sure we all stay close to the microphones.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have to do another swearing-in?
No, we, we can, yeah, it doesn't hurt.
You wouldn't mind?
Please, right here, do you swear affirm testimony? You get these proceedings, you're not the one that's the truth.
I do.
Would we have to ask?
Absolutely, let's go.
Yes, swear them in for this meeting, yes.
Swear affirm testimony? You get these proceedings, you're not the one that's the truth. State your names and your affiliation with the city.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Jason Fisher, Board Engineer.
And Mr. Rodriguez, I believe?
Yes.
Can you spell your last name for me?
R-O-D-R-I-G-U-E-P.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, since the last meeting, have you submitted any supplemental report to the Board?
I have not.
So we are still working off the report that I believe is marked as O 6 at the last meeting, correct?
I don't remember what it was marked as, but I can tell you the date is December 4, 2019.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, would you agree that this application constitutes a building or structure for the gathering of persons for purposes such as civic, social, or religious functions, recreation, food or drink consumption, or awaiting transportation?
That sounds like the definition of a place of assembly that I included in my report.
So would you agree that this meets the definition of a place of assembly?
I, yes, I think I recognize that it might fall under that category.
Okay. And what is the parking requirement for a place of assembly under the waterfront redevelopment plan?
There is none.
There is none? Okay. Does the waterfront redevelopment plan supersede all other development regulations in the city of Asbury Park?
Well, not all other. First of all, the waterfront redevelopment plan has a limited footprint, so the rest of the city is not affected.
You're often like it.
I think the mic is on. No?
Yes. You just have to be close, though.
Literally.
You can't get any closer. Put it in his mouth.
About to brush my teeth with it, see if I get any closer.
We're going to go loud.
Okay. So for a project in the waterfront redevelopment area, would you agree that the waterfront redevelopment plan supersedes all other development regulations in the city of Asbury Park?
I don't recall, from reading the redevelopment plan, and again, this is going back a while, I don't recall seeing language that, to that effect, all other development regulations. There is a section on uses, and clearly, it's implied that that overrides the underlying zoning, but, and perhaps you can point me to that section that I'm missing. Looks like you're searching for it.
I am. So let's turn to Section 3.8 of the redevelopment plan, which I'm going to put up on the screen here momentarily. There we go. And again, just like last time, this is the version of the redevelopment plan that I have pulled off the city of Asbury Park's website, the version that you had reviewed.
Yes.
If we look at the beginning of Section 3.8 labeled "land use," that first paragraph there says, "As provided for in NJSA 40A-A:12AC, the development controls in this redevelopment plan supersede all applicable provisions of all other Asbury Park development regulations, including the zoning requirements for prime renewal and boardwalk area."
Okay.
Do you read that? Does it mean that the waterfront redevelopment plan supersedes all applicable provisions of the Asbury Park development regulations?
I just heard you read that. I, I can't actually read from here to over there, but I'm, I'm assuming that you've read the, the actual language.
So you agree?
I agree that, that what you read is on the page.
He's going to move the mic and lose his head.
Let's try something new. Is that, is that any better?
Yeah, a little.
Okay.
I'm not really sure what I'm doing wrong here.
Try and speak into this audio, rather than.
I think, yeah, I think you're trying to be very scholarly and noble, and when you're answering the questions, you're looking at the attorney. I think that's where you're losing, because you're looking at the attorney, and the mic still hit there. So when you reply, maybe just don't look at the attorney and reply.
I won't take it personally.
I should look at the mic, then.
Yes.
We've had a running thing that I feel bad, my back is always to everybody here, but it's the.
Nothing we can do about it, really.
Nothing we can do about it. Okay. All right. So, given that the waterfront redevelopment plan supersedes all development regulations for property within the waterfront redevelopment area, are any of the parking requirements for the districts outside the waterfront redevelopment plan applicable to this application, such as parking requirements for the B1 zone?
They are not directly applicable, no.
Okay. And how about requirements for uses or conditional uses for the B1 zone? Do they apply to anything in the waterfront redevelopment area?
No.
Okay. So, in your report where you talk about the need for operational testimony for a use in the B1 zone, does the B1 zone app, regulation apply at all to this application in the waterfront redevelopment area?
Well, the B1 zone is one of two zones where a similar type of use is permitted, right? So, within the framework of the rest of the city, if you were to propose this use, this use, however you characterize it, that is one of two districts where it would be contemplated. And there are rules for how to evaluate it. So, I think it is relevant.
But are, are the B1 use regulations applicable to any use inside the waterfront redevelopment area that are governed by the waterfront redevelopment plan?
No, the use regulations are not. But how, but the framework for evaluating the uses, I think, are relevant.
What is the framework for evaluating the uses?
Well...
No, but let me, let me pause there. When you say the framework, do you mean whether the planning board has jurisdiction, or do you mean the ordinance?
I'm, I'm not following you. The planning board obviously has jurisdiction unless it's not a permitted use, in which case it would have gone to the zoning board.
So, can the planning board apply any conditional use criteria for uses in the B1 district to a use here in the waterfront redevelopment plan?
I think it can, yes, I think it can apply the same framework, the same line of thinking, the same approach.
So, it's your testimony as a professional planner that this board could apply a conditional use criteria for a use in the B1 zone to a use in the waterfront redevelopment plan?
If it's evaluating the same use, I don't see any reason why the standards for evaluation would be different in the waterfront redevelopment zone than they would in whatever other zone we're talking about. This is the standards for evaluating.
So, the standards for evaluating a B1 use should be imported into the waterfront redevelopment plan, is that your testimony?
So, the B1 u, the B1 district is a commercial district. And it has, the ordinance has standards for evaluating a place of assembly there. So, that means that the land development regulations recognize that places of assembly have impacts that need to be evaluated. Now, it would seem to me that transferring that to a district that is residential or mixed use, that those same standards, that same level of concern would be relevant.
How do you determine what a conditional, what the criteria are for a conditional use? And you, you look into a zoning ordinance and you find the use. How do you determine what the conditional use criteria are?
Well, if it's a conditional use, it has to have conditions, otherwise it's not a conditional use by definition.
What are the conditions for a beach club here in the waterfront redevelopment area?
That it can't block access to the beach.
Are there any other conditions?
Not that I can remember.
And the waterfront redevelopment plan, does it supersede all other development regulations?
The paragraph that you just read.
That's a yes?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Did you cite the standard for granting relief for a design waiver anywhere in your report?
I don't recall seeing a standard in the redevelopment plan for granting relief from design standard.
So, is it your testimony that the waterfront redevelopment plan does not have a standard for granting relief from design waivers?
I, let me repeat what I just said. I don't recall seeing a specific standard for that, to effectuate that.
And when you drafted your report and prepared for the testimony you gave last time, did you apply any standard from the waterfront redevelopment plans, your analysis of the design waivers?
If there are no standards to apply, then I could not have applied those standards, correct?
I'm asking you.
Yeah.
Who has jurisdiction to grant a CAFRA permit?
The NJDEP.
And who has jurisdiction to decide if a particular application complies with a CAFRA permit?
Uh, the NJDEP.
Does this board have jurisdiction to determine, under its site plan ordinance, if there's compliance with a CAFRA permit?
I think the CAFRA permit and whether there's, whether there's compliance with it is relevant to this board's work because it involves the validity of the redevelopment plan.
Can you point to any area of the site plan ordinance adopted here in Esberry Park that gives the board jurisdiction to determine compliance with a redevelop, with the CAFRA permit?
No.
Okay. Going back to use.
I'm sorry, going back to what?
Use. So, we talked a lot about use last time, about beach clubs and pool clubs. What legal entity adopted the waterfront redevelopment plan?
The governing body.
Governing body of the city of Esberry Park?
Yes.
Okay. Who was in a better position to interpret the waterfront redevelopment plan, the Esberry Park governing body, or the Monmouth Beach governing body? And we're talking specifically about the waterfront redevelopment plan here in Esberry Park.
That sounds like a trick question. Obviously, Monmouth Beach has nothing to do with Esberry Park. And so, it has no jurisdiction over a redevelopment plan adopted by the governing body here in town.
Okay.
Can you explain a little bit further what, where you're trying to go with this?
Sure. If the city of Esberry Park governing body, the same governing body that adopted the waterfront redevelopment plan, same legal entity, adopted a resolution finding that this application is consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan, does that carry more weight than an ordinance adopted by the city of Long Branch?
I never claimed that the city of Long Branch or the, the city of Monmouth Beach had anything to do with decisions, land use decisions made in this town. So, this seems a little bit disingenuous to me as a line of reasoning.
Okay.
So, but the other thing, the city of Esberry Park, the governing body creates the redevelopment plan, but I don't remember anything in the redevelopment statute that puts the governing body in the position of a zoning officer.
Are you...
And so, by adopting a resolution that finds a particular development application to be consistent with the plan, that seems to be unusual to me. And it seems to be unusual to me.
Are you aware that the redevelopment plan requires that before an application in the waterfront redevelopment plan can be submitted to this board, that it is first reviewed by the technical review committee and the city council?
I saw that. And I, I thought that was an unusual provision as well.
Is it what the redevelopment plan says?
I understand.
And we have already marked in as Exhibit A3, the resolution of the city council dated March 13th, 2019. Before today, had you reviewed this resolution?
I don't recall reviewing this resolution, no.
So, your testimony that you gave in December and your report to say, dated December 4th, were not based on any content of this resolution, is that accurate?
I don't recall reviewing this resolution. It doesn't mean that I didn't.
But you have no memory, no recollection of reviewing it?
I, it's possible that I did, but I can't certify that I did, so...
Did you cite to it in your report at all?
I didn't.
Okay. Did you provide any list of design waivers that you believed that the applicant required as part of its application here?
Well, I described them generally...
Not described. Did you provide a distinct list referring to pages and the specific provisions of the redevelopment plan?
No. I don't think I needed to because they're described in the review memo from the planning board's planning consultant.
Those are all the questions that I have for Mr. Rodriguez. But I reserve the right to redirect and to add additional questions once the board has asked their questions, if there's any additional comments.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the planning board have any questions?
So, just to clarify, we ask questions of the witness, and then if we want our professionals to chime in, do we ask at the same time?
Whenever, whatever, whatever works for you.
Okay. Because I, just would like a clarification. It was said again and again that it supersedes all other regulations, not Esberry Park, not whatever, but all other regulations. Is that correct? All other state regulations?
No, 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 no. Land use regulations.
So, just clarifying, I think, for the, for the record.
Yeah.
And then...
And, and just to, to take that one step further, it has to affirmatively state that it's overriding them. If it doesn't do that, then it isn't. And it's only those regulations that the redevelopment plan affirmatively states that it's overriding that are affected. Any other regulation that's not mentioned in the redevelopment plan is not affected.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, it's, it's limited in scope.
Okay.
And, and there are cases where the redevelopment plan doesn't override any regulations by choice. So, it's not a requirement.
And then I guess also a clarification. So, whether or not a permit is or is not in the board's, because you're really getting it in the board's jurisdiction. I do believe as part of our resolution, we can require that all other permits and everything are in place. So, it may not be our jurisdiction, but it is a requirement of any resolution.
Every resolution that we have passed since I've been here, which is the beginning of the plan, as, as adopted now, has a condition of approval that the applicants must comply with all outstanding permits and CAFRA requirements for the waterfront redevelopment. So, it's their obligation affirmatively post-approval to show compliance.
Okay. Thank you. And they have, I mean, they have been forthcoming with the letters to CAFRA, so I think they...
We cover them. We make sure that we're...
Just to be clear, yeah.
We do cover that base, yes.
Okay. And then, I guess, this is more a question for our board professionals, but in terms of talking about the board jurisdiction and zoning and zoning compliance, are there also, are we also considering an application in terms of the overall master plan and consistency with the master plan? Are we? I mean, is that part of what we judge?
No.
No? Okay.
This is, I mean, effectively, any other preliminary and final site plan approval that you would normally do.
Got it.
Sorry.
So, the board is basically acting on a preliminary and final major site plan approval, just as it would, just like any other preliminary and final major site plan approval.
Okay.
Master plan would come in for both, I'm sorry. Master plan would come in for negative criteria for bulk variances, which is not the case here.
Okay. And then, I guess, it would help me if the planner could also speak to the design criteria, and whether or not, I think there was a statement that you can't, it was something about granting relief, but if there is no design standard, then we can't grant relief from that.
Well, right, you can't grant relief for a criteria where there is no. However, again, you know from other applications, a variance needs to have a certain level of justification, positive and negative, whether it's C1, C2. A design exception or waiver, however, does not rise to that level of scrutiny. So, it's kind of an easier lift to grant. The board just basically needs to feel that it's justified, but it's not under the municipal land use law defined the way a variance would be.
And can you remind me, because I think the design waiver came up previously, whether you are asking for a design waiver under this?
There are design waivers requested, yes.
That's it.
Are there any other questions from the board regarding this witness and this cross-examination? Anything from our professionals?
Yes, I have a question.
Go for it.
Mr. Rodriguez, in line with your testimony regarding that this procedure that we have, granting the power with the redevelopment agency, the mayor and council, being rather unusual. Do you, are you familiar with the holding of either Jersey Urban Renewal versus the city of Esberry Park, or Britwoods versus the city of Esberry Park?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Professionals?
Going once, going twice.
I don't know, there's still, there's still discussion. Hang on.
Best cross-examination has no cross-examination, unless you feel something's going to matter. It's up to you.
We're good to go? Nothing else from the board? Okay, let's open the, let's open it to public questions. Please...
Motion, right?
Yes, motion to open to public questions?
So moved.
Cross-examination of the witness.
Aye.
Okay, remember, let's remember that the questions that we're going to be asking have to do with the cross-examination that you heard here today.
Oh, today? What about earlier?
And, and anything from this witness, which was in the prior meeting, was December 9th.
I appreciate it. Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. Counselor Serpico, you're going to have to help me ask these questions on occasion. Okay. As far as design principles on page 17 of the waterfront plan, it talks about design principles in the North Shore. A park-like setting, more open, specifically less commercial and more open space. That's on page 17 of the waterfront plan. In your opinion, do you think that fits that design, this, this fits that design principle of creating a more park-like setting, more open, specifically less commercial and more open space?
She's asking you.
I'm sorry, that's a question for me.
Yeah, it's a question for you.
Are you sure that, that, that standard...
That's on, that's, we're talking about the North Shore area, which is the, North Shore is the area that the beach club is being, this entity is being proposed. So, the design principles for the North Shore says that design needs to be a park-like setting, more open, specifically less commercial, and more open space. Does this design fit that principle of the waterfront redevelopment plan on page 17?
I, I confess, I don't recall, and again, it's been a while since I read through the redevelopment plan. I don't recall that particular statement. But, the statements regarding the architectural expression and the urban design expression that I reference in my, that I reference in my, in my report are very clear, are very pointed, and this application violates every single one of them. And, I might add, essentially negates the entirety of the design standards section of the redevelopment plan. There is no walking back. So, it would create a precedent that essentially negates the entire, the entire design standards section of the plan. I'm not sure that that answered your question, but...
That wouldn't answer that.
Okay, another question I have is, how does it, how, in your opinion, does this not restrict access to the beach when it's taking up an entire block? And that... And that's in the design, that's on page 17. How does it not restrict access?
Well, so you have access, this is private property, and so there's no requirement that there be direct access through the middle of the block. The requirement is that the access not be impeded at the ends, which is where, you know, the extensions of the streets, where the pedestrians would be going, and that's not being done here in this, in this proposal. But that's not to say that you couldn't have a proposal for this block that would also have mid-block points of access, that they could voluntarily offer additional connections so that it was more permeable. That's not being done, but that's not, that's not, in my opinion, actually a requirement, although it would be a benefit.
According to the planning principles that are listed in the waterfront redevelopment plan, it talks about a couple things, and I'm just going to go down the list with a couple things, okay? It talks about preserving the Bradley Plan, the intention of the Bradley Plan, and the intention of the Bradley Plan was not to build east of Ocean Avenue. So how does this proposal marry with the planning principle, our waterfront redevelopment planning principle of, of not building east of Ocean Avenue, of preserving the planning, the Bradley Plan?
That goes beyond the scope of his direct and cross-examination. I said that question goes way beyond the scope of both his direct and cross-examination.
So...
Are we allowed to talk about planning principles, Mr. Serpico?
You're allowed to question the witness about the testimony that he has given. And if that, and if part of that is planning principles, you can ask a question about what he testified to.
Okay, that's, part of that is totally planning principles, it's...
No, you mentioned the Bradley Plan and construction east of Ocean Avenue.
And that's in the waterfront redevelopment plan.
And you mentioned east of Ocean Avenue, and I said that you must limit your questions to the testimony given by the witness.
Okay.
He didn't talk about any of that, Bradley Plan, construction east of Ocean Avenue, to my recollection.
I'm having flashbacks from 2002 right now.
Okay, I remember that.
I remember, you too, you gave me a hard time last time, too.
No, I'm not giving you a hard time, I'm really not.
How does this, if we're talking about planning principles, how does it, how does this particular site plan preserve memories of past entertainment? Or does it, I mean, does it marry, you know, with what used to be on Asbury's waterfront?
No, 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 this is, this is a foreign object that's introduced, as I said in my report, it's like a spaceship landed there, it has nothing to do with anything else around here.
Just as, I don't believe, just as an objection, I do not believe there was testimony about marriage to past entertainment practices, or whether Mr. Rodriguez reviewed any past entertainment practices or uses in his direct testimony.
That is correct.
Okay, we did talk about whether or not this particular plan, or this particular proposal, prevented residential and entertainment conflicts, which is, again, a planning principle of the waterfront redevelopment plan. In your opinion, do you think that this particular plan prevents residential entertainment conflicts?
Well, there's no, there's no, there's no basis, we can't really come to an assessment of that, because we have no description of the operations, and unless we know how this proposed facility is going to operate, we can't evaluate what kinds of off-site impacts it might have, and what consequences it might have for the nearby residential neighbors. It's just impossible to, it's impossible to tell, one could speculate, but I'm not going to speculate.
Okay, 2.2 in the redevelopment objectives talk about respecting Asbury Park's historic character. Does this, in your, in your opinion, does this particular plan respect Asbury Park's historic character?
And again, I just renew my objection that I don't believe there was testimony concerning Asbury Park's historic character during direct examination of the witness.
Or on cross.
Or on cross.
Okay, did I ask you, I'm sorry, I'm losing it, does this particular plan prevent parking and traffic problems based on 2.2 of redevelopment objectives?
Well, since they're proposing to have no dedicated parking, the parking demand is going to have to be satisfied at the expense of some other use and users, so... I think that's the answer to your question.
Okay, and then I just have one more, which is, did I hear correctly that beach clubs are not listed as giving an exemption for parking requirements?
Are not listed?
Yes.
Pool clubs are not listed.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else's questions?
Rob Taylor, 1501 Ocean Avenue, just a quick question.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I think at the beginning there was an indication that members would indicate where they are or are not part of SAW, and I was remiss with the last person, but if we could get that straight for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Not part of SAW. So anyway, one of the questions I have is that I keep hearing that this is for a beach club, correct?
Well, that's what the applicant has represented, that's certainly not my opinion.
Well, here's, my, here's the point, is that I don't know how they can be putting forth an application for a beach club when they can't define what it is, and to know what, how it's going to operate and what it's going to do is paramount to be able to do that. For example, my biggest concern here is I think it's...
No, no, wait, 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 your question has to be asked of the witness.
Okay, so...
And based on the testimony that the witness has given.
Am I correct that they've talked about it as a beach club?
You don't ask the witness the question.
So you don't even think this is a beach club, is that correct?
I definitely do not think that what's been proposed is a beach club.
I have no further questions, I mean, I think that's the biggest point tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Warner Baumgartner, city historian.
Are you a member of the...
Oh, no, I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm an advocate for the City of Asbury Park, in my position. You've testified at great length about the architecture of this building as being inappropriate or looking like a spaceship, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay, as far as the uses, do you have any concerns that a pool is being built here? Is that detrimental, or positive or negative in your mind, either way? A pool, any problem with that?
Any problem with building a pool next to a beach? It's, it's, it's not uncommon under certain circumstances.
Okay.
And, and beach clubs, legitimate beach clubs, including others here in Monmouth County, do have pools in addition to granting access to the beach.
Okay, with regard to the architecture, how would you mitigate the problems that you've identified in your document and in your testimony? Could you pose some solutions to the problems that you've identified?
I think if the applicant had followed the design standards in the redevelopment plan, then we'd be looking at a very different-looking building that would satisfy the intent of the redevelopment plan.
Okay, could you be more specific, perhaps?
Sure. The redevelopment plan does not favor buildings with blank walls. This, the proposed pool club is a building that has four blank walls, not just one or two, every wall is a blank wall. So that's immediately a no-no. If you dress up the blank wall, and by doing, by doing that, it doesn't mean that you have to have clear fenestration that you can look through and see through. You can replicate that, you can mimic that, you can create the illusion of solids and voids, you can animate the facade, break it down into smaller pieces, and every, every step of the way, you're going towards satisfying the intent of the design standards of the redevelopment plan.
Now, you're aware that the proposal includes a, I believe, a board-on-board fence on the boardwalk side?
Yes.
Okay. Do you consider that to be an articulated facade? Does that mean anything even remote?
No, absolutely not, in fact, I think, I see that as an insult to the people on the beach.
Okay, the ends of the building, the north and south walls, you've seen the renderings, those are blank walls, are they not?
They are.
Okay. Hypothetically, if it's impossible, from a technical perspective, to put windows or doors on those walls, how would you mitigate those blank walls architecturally?
You can put windows that are not functional, in a sense, they're faux windows, they, they have frosted glass, for example, or they have some other device, they pop out or they pop in. You know, there are many creative ways of dealing with these types of issues. I don't know, I don't understand it really why the emphasis on the blank walls, but let's assume for a minute, and I'm not assuming that, but let's assume for a minute that there's a functional reason to have a blank wall. There are many ways, and you can dress it up so that it's not offensive. In this particular case, they have made no effort whatsoever to dress them up, none.
Would three-dimensional type of solutions, such as what is commonly referred to as articulation, would proper articulation and a three-dimensional applique to that wall mitigate that?
It would, it would go a long way towards it, yes. I mean, if done properly.
Okay. Regarding the, the green side, the west side with the ivy, what are your concerns about that specifically?
I, I'm not really sure, other than trying to mask what's underneath, it serves no functional purpose, and it's not like the 19th century pavilions in Asbury Park had vines growing up the sides, or, you know, it's, it's, it's a foreign, it's a foreign concept that may be trendy, that's being proposed here, essentially to disguise the paucity of what's behind it, which is the blank wall, the fence.
All right.
Does that answer your question?
Absolutely, understood. Now, you talked and testified a lot about context, design context, and having the whole be bigger than the individual buildings. Does, does this building fit into the context of what's already in that neighborhood?
No.
In what way? What's the problem with it?
It's complete, it's a foreign object, it's, it's unlike anything that you'd see anywhere else in Asbury Park. It makes absolutely no effort whatsoever to draw upon any of the historic architectural references here.
And that would be desirable, or would that be something just...
In my opinion, it would.
Okay.
Because every time you do that, you contribute to the context, and when you don't do it, you detract.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Just trying to think of something else. Thank you very much, I'm finished.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else with a question about the testimony for today or from December 9th, from this witness?
Do I have to swear in or anything?
No.
Okay.
Ernest Mingoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park.
Mr. Mingoli, are you a member of the organization?
No.
Okay, thank you.
SAW, I'm not a member.
Yeah, thank you.
But I am a homeowner since August of 2007, and I directly look at what's being proposed here, I look at this cove thing, which I'm not allowed to mention, but I still look at it, and I look at the removal of the boardwalk and the doing away of the fishing beach, so I look at everything. To me, this is like why I moved here.
Okay, where's your question?
Being evaporated.
We've got to get to your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay.
Can always count on you to help the opposition. So, Mr. Expert Witness, is this an illegitimate beach club in your opinion, professional opinion?
It is not.
I just wrote down, I thought you stated it was an illegitimate...
Yes, illegitimate, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood you.
No, no, I'm going to ask the question again, okay? Thank you, sir. Is this beach club illegitimate, illegitimate beach club as to your testimony?
Okay, so let me answer it this way, this is not a legitimate beach club.
Thank you, thank you, a thousand times.
This is a pool club...
Thank you.
...parading as a beach club.
Thank you.
Masquerading.
Thank you. In your professional opinion, in this, this beach club, for those people who are on the beach, in front of it, to the side of it, looking west, is this an insult to people on the beach, was that your statement?
That was my statement, yes.
Thank you. Was it your professional testimony that parking, although this may fit some criteria, criteria where it's not required, however, the actual result, in your professional opinion, will impact the surrounding areas and zones, meaning if you don't need parking, that's fine, but those cars are going to go somewhere, and was it your testimony that it could and probably will adversely affect the other nearby zones?
Yes, that was my testimony.
A yes is fine, because I, I wrote it down as you said it, I think it was magnificent. Okay, in your professional opinion, I just need a little clarification, you've called this a spaceship, a foreign object, I think last time you called it like a, I don't know, a stealthy battleship, it's just a lot of things that don't seem positive. It landed from outer space, it's connected to nothing, and it's a foreign concept that may be hiding something going on inside that we probably don't want to know, now...
I have a vivid imagination, as you can see.
Yeah, I know, but you know something, you know something, it's accurate, that's why we're all behind you. You know, you seem to have perception that's magnificent, you should work for the city. So, so did you, in your professional opinion, is that your description?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm just going to, spaceship, foreign object, landed from outer space, connected to nothing, a foreign concept to hide something going on in the inside.
I think this is repetitive, the question was just asked and answered.
Yeah. Can I...
Can, can we see the witness? Can we...
Yeah, can I...
You're blocking the guy that's talking. Thank you. All right, Ernest, go ahead.
You know, you're right in my view of the, well, can you...
You know, you're right in my view of the, well, can you move, please? No, I mean move, literally. Thank you. You know, I don't know. Wait, your dog is around. Where's your dog?
What's going on?
Okay, so can you go with your dog? I'm trying to speak to the expert witness. Are you kidding me?
Part of the public.
Uh, respectfully, hi.
I'm sorry.
Is this okay?
No, it's not. You cannot disrupt this meeting.
Sir. Who?
No, not this gentleman.
Thank you.
If you could please move to the side so that you're not blocking anybody's view...
Are we good?
No, no.
Move to the side.
No.
Go with the dog. Sorry.
Depends on the people that are sitting on the side, are they...
That's good.
That's, there you go, there you go. You're not blocking anybody over there.
Thank you so much. You know, Madam Chairman, that's the first time we've ever agreed on anything, but I appreciate it.
I just ask that, just for the record, clarifying that the stoppage here, because there'll be a transcript of this, is because there's a person who is not speaking at the moment who is setting up a recorder and who has now moved to the side.
Certainly.
Thank you.
For the record.
Just for the transcript, because there will be some confusion.
Sure.
Certainly. No, she just wanted to make note that someone came in and is making some sort of recording, and we just wanted it for the record.
Yeah, just, because there will be, there will be a written transcript, I just wanted to make sure it was understood in the transcript what happened.
Okay.
No, but you're doing it again.
All right, can we, can we please stop disrupting this meeting and let's move on?
Thank you, okay, let me continue.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, so I think we've covered, it's definitely not a beach club, you said, and we agreed. Parking, I just want a little bit more clarification, because I think you were here when it was estimated, I don't know if they're allowed to estimate, but I think there was some comment that it could attract as many as 400 cars. And I know that's nothing that's been testified to or expert, but at some point you have to say, if you have a club of this size, how many people are coming and are some of them going to be driving cars? So, I know this planning board doesn't have authority over that, and I know the plan says parking's not required, but I'm keenly interested in this expert who really realizes that not just does one structure affect itself, but it affects surrounding ones. And what's key here is...
We need, no, no, we need to have a question.
I'm getting to it, thank you.
No, get, then ask your question. You're citing, you're citing a preamble...
It's a long question.
...which is not permitted.
Okay, so the question is...
Ask the question.
Thank you. The question is, those 400 cars, that that number's been tossed around, do you, do you believe...
There's been no testimony.
This witness has not testified to any quantity of cars.
Okay, okay, all right, unknown cars that are going to come to this club, is, it was it, and is it your testimony that somehow it must, unless they arrive on the spaceship, it must affect the surrounding areas adversely, you said? Was that your...
At the expense of other users, yes.
Thank you, and that was your exact words. I'm sorry, I changed it a little bit, and I want to thank you for your expertise. Thank you, no further questions.
Anybody else have any questions?
Simple question. Nate Gorham, 1501 Ocean Avenue, not a member of SAW.
And your name, sir?
Nate Gorham.
Thank you.
Regarding your description of the property and the architectural style, and you said spaceship, et cetera, would you possibly say that that design aesthetic is maybe from the like early 70s and 60s, that they called it brutal architecture? Would you say it could be called brutal architectural?
I, I wouldn't use that term, because the, you know, brutalism has sort of a very specific expression. I would say that in its contempt for what's around it, what's being proposed here has similarities with brutalist architecture, but I wouldn't go so far as to characterize this as a neo-brutalist expression, because there are other things in which it differs.
Okay.
Excuse me.
I have just a clarifying question for the record. Was Mr. Rodriguez offered as an expert in the field of architecture? I don't believe he was. Unless, were you offered as an expert in the field of architecture?
I don't remember, I'm an architect, but I don't remember if we were offered as an expert.
No, he was offered as an expert.
Okay, I guess, then the next question is, is there any other building in Asbury Park that has this style? To your knowledge.
I, I couldn't answer that question, I don't know Asbury Park well enough to answer that question. Chances are, no, but I can't say for sure.
All right, and then it's supposed to fit into the design aesthetic, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just Warner, before you go, before you go again, is there anybody else that has a question? I'd just like to make sure that everybody goes once before we go for a second round. Okay?
Thank you. Warner Baumgartner, city historian. Regarding your testimony about the planning board and TRC interaction with this, you had stated that you found that to be unusual or uncommon, could you elaborate on that?
Planning boards have jurisdiction over site plan issues.
And what's your concern about the TRC and city council being involved?
At some point, the designated agent, the zoning officer, usually makes a determination as to whether a use is permitted or not, and routes it to the appropriate jurisdiction. Sometimes that determination is made by more than the zoning officer, sometimes the zoning officer doesn't make the determination and lets the boards decide for themselves. But I've never, in all the years of practice in New Jersey as a professional planner, I've never seen a governing body make the determination that a particular use is permitted or not permitted. Never seen that.
You're aware that...
There's always a first time for everything, right?
Right. Are you aware that this is a legally designated area in need of redevelopment?
Yes, I'm very, I'm very aware of that.
Okay. Are you aware that the city council is the designated redevelopment agency?
I'm aware of that, too.
Okay, and in lieu of that, you still have the same opinion?
I do, and I admit, this, this is an old area in need of redevelopment. It was designated prior to the 1992 redevelopment statute that we currently have, so it must have been designated under the old, whatever, it was called the urban renewal statutes, and it must have been designated under whatever standards were in those statutes. I'm not familiar with those statutes, I've never, I've never worked with them.
Would it surprise you that it was as far back as 1984?
I, it wouldn't surprise me, so, and there may be...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, excuse me, once again, you're disrupting other people, please.
There may be, just to finish your, answering your question, there may be something in that history that I'm not familiar with that would inform this particular condition, I don't know. I've not researched it, and I've not learned about it during these hearings, so, but it's possible that there's something there that I'm not aware of.
Okay, I think what I'm gathering, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that your opinion would be that it would require quite a bit of research back in history to get back to the actual start of the redevelopment area.
Well, to the extent that there's something there that would, that would color or justify the way things are handled now, I don't...
Okay. With regard to the TRC being involved with this, do you know of any other municipalities or situations where a technical review committee such as ours is utilized?
I, I know of other municipalities that have TRCs, I'm not, it's not clear to me whether this TRC is just for redevelopment projects or for every project, I don't know. I'm certainly aware of other communities that have TRCs, but the TRCs do not override the role of the, of the zoning officer, they don't make determinations of whether a use is permitted or not. That's, that's not their, that's not their, their job.
So, what role would the municipal planner or redevelopment officer have in any of this?
It's going beyond the scope of his testimony.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any other questions of this witness?
No one else? Ernest Mingoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, I'm not going to take the bait of like hecklers and people trying to intimidate people like myself and others who really care about our community. I don't care if they have dogs or batons or whatever.
You have a question? Do you have a question, please?
Let's get to the questions, let's get to the questions, we know that.
That is my question, why are you allowing it?
We're not, no, your question has to be of the witness.
Excuse me, please, sir. Sir, please.
You keep doing that.
No, please.
No, what are...
That camera cannot, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Time out, stop.
Please.
Let the chairwoman speak.
The camera to the side, please. So it's not in the way of the witnesses, of the planning board, of the public. Please, no, over there. We mentioned before, over there.
Over here? Is this good?
Keep going. Keep going, so that the people over there are okay, we're good.
And you know, in the future, it would be a courtesy that you ask permission to do that instead of just walking up in front of the group and putting up a camera, just for the future reference. Thank you. What's your name? Richard Lambert. Richard, I'll contact you. Thank you.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Sure.
Mr. Professional, Mr. Rodriguez, I appreciate your being able to experience back, be here now, and even look forward to the future, and my question to you is, if this is built as it's proposed, as we sit here now, there are other lots very similar to this along Ocean Avenue, east of Ocean Avenue. My question to you is, could this, would this set a dangerous precedent, meaning if the first spaceship gets approved, are we going to have other spaceships that are going to land much easier?
That's way outside the scope of this testimony.
No, it isn't, no, it isn't.
I'm telling you, that's my ruin.
Why, how do you want me to rephrase it?
I'm not going to argue with you.
I'm not arguing.
Yes, you are, you want to dispute it.
You're interrupting my question.
I know, that's my job, when you don't ask a relevant question.
That's not your job.
Madam Chairwoman, the person that's speaking is out of order.
Yes.
I'm out of order?
If you have a question, that, if you have a question that has to do with what was testified, please keep going.
I'm trying to ask, but the city attorney keeps interrupting me.
And he has a right to do that.
To interrupt me?
That's correct. If he feels that there's a reason, a valuable reason, then yes, he does. He's stating that you are out of order. Go ahead.
I don't think anyone here agrees, but, I don't think anyone agrees, but let me continue.
So therefore, Mr. Professional, Architect, Mr. Rodriguez, would it be easier, in your opinion, if this gets approved, based on the fact that it's, by your testimony, illegitimate, it has problems with cafra, all kinds of issues that make it, maybe not even that you testified legal?
Can I ask the same question?
If in fact it gets built, what would that do to future meetings like this? Make them a moot point almost?
That's the same question.
I can't ask that?
No, I told you you can't ask that.
Why not?
It's beyond the scope of his testimony.
Beyond the scope?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have another, do you have another question?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Okay. You testified that this governing body actually doesn't have authority to make which major determinations that could affect the approval or not of this plan?
I don't...
Would you be specific? You said, "It's very unusual at a governing body," and would you just specify those governing bodies that probably shouldn't have yea-nay over this?
I think my, my testimony was that it is unusual for a governing body to put itself in the role of the zoning official and make a determination of whether a particular use is a permitted use or something, or something else.
Okay, I appreciate that, and in fact, since we're here in Asbury Park, and we're talking about council, planning, zoning, et cetera, that's what you meant by governing body, that this, in fact, is kind of unusual.
I think we've been over this a few times.
Okay, well, can he just answer?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it, you said yes, thank you, I appreciate it. Is it, is it your testimony that the blank walls may be, in fact, blank walls, because there could be something inside that's preventing it, like cabanas or structures, that under this plan would prevent it from doing that? That it's not just by design with honeysuckle, that maybe you can have it because inside there's several floors, there's structures, there's private cabanas, so in fact, this whole thing, although it's not a beach club in your opinion, it also is kind of an insult to people who live or walk by it or around it. Is that your opinion of the blank walls, all four of them?
Yes, the blank walls are a design decision, there's no functional reason for them to be the way they're proposed to be.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for your expertise.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, any other questions from the public? All right, move to closed public questions.
So moved.
Call it a favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this point, what we'll do is that we'll take a five-minute recess, and the next point of, the next point is going to be the beginning of public comment.
No.
No, I'm sorry. We have rebuttal witnesses.
Oh, you have another, you have another one?
We'll be recalling Mr. Delaney as a rebuttal witness.
Okay, so let's do that, let's still take the five minutes, though.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
Aye. Aye.
Please, take your seats, please.
Councilwoman Edlong Clayton, Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Judy Seibert. Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Crisack.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So, just as one housekeeping matter, at the previous meeting, we indicated that we did not need to separately mark the redevelopment plan as an exhibit. Is that still the case, that the board has judicial, can take judicial notice of the redevelopment plan?
That's fine.
Correct? Okay. And just for reference...
You know, it should be, let's put it in the record, because if there's an appeal, it goes up with the whole record.
Oh, we can...
So if we have a copy, do we have a copy of it?
I don't have one on it.
That's fine, all right.
I can enter it.
Okay, we'll do it at a later date, that's all, but at some point, we'll put it in.
And just for reference, there is a provision of the redevelopment plan that does set forth the legal standard for design waivers, which I'm sure the board can take judicial notice of.
We sure can.
Okay.
No, not yet, we'll wait until we get an official copy from the city and put it in the record at a later meeting, that's all.
All right, we could do that, we could do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. So I've asked Mr. Delaney to come back up to address some of the comments that were made in testimony by the witnesses brought up by SAW, so I don't know if Mr. Delaney needs to be re-spawned.
Yes, please.
Do you swear upon the testimony you give during these proceedings? Will you be cheerful, will you be...
I do.
Can you speak to the name again for the record?
Sure, Sean, S-E-A-N, Delaney, D-E-L-A-N-Y, professional engineer, state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Delaney was previously offered as an expert in the field of civil engineering, and we continue to offer him in that regard. Mr. Delaney, did you review the report submitted by Ms. Pace Goldman dated December 4th, 2019?
Yes.
Were you present for Ms. Pace Goldman's testimony on December 9th, 2019?
Yes, I was.
After reviewing the report and listening to the testimony, what additional work did you do?
So we re-reviewed, re-reviewed the plans for the wood decking, and the fact that the slats in the decking allow for water to flow through the deck to the sand and soil below. Thus, the decking, in our opinion, can be considered a pervious surface, and runoff will discharge to the sand below, which can then, which is also then used, can be used as additional storage volume...
can be used as additional storage volume for the property and the project. I previously had testified that the original design was conservative and assumed the deck to be an impervious surface on the site. And this is a change from that original analysis. We also reviewed the design of the off-site existing stormwater system, and specifically, the design of the inlets and pipes along Ocean Avenue, along the property frontage. We revised the report, which was submitted to this board and its professionals.
When you were here for Ms. Pace Goldman's testimony, is it your understanding that her testimony did not concern the standards for recharge or water quality?
That's correct.
Is it your understanding that her comments were generally limited to water quantity?
Correct.
Have you revised your report to provide greater detail concerning potential stormwater quantity?
Yes, we have.
And what were the general findings of the resubmitted report?
So when we accounted for the wood decking as a pervious surface, allowing the stormwater to discharge into the sand below, the existing sand, as I mentioned, acts as an additional storage area in addition to the proposed pipe system that was previously discussed and described. As a result of this, the extra volume of that sand, the water running off the deck will go into the sand and travel downward until the voids within the sand fill up and become saturated. At that time, the water will rise up through the sand, interact with the proposed stormwater system that we had proposed, starting at elevation of six, interact with the pipe system. If it saturates further, will extend, rise further into the soil to the elevation of the eight-inch pipes that exit from our system and connect into the inlets along Ocean Avenue. As a result of this, looking at this way and using the sand as an additional storage area, the amount of stormwater runoff generated by the proposed site, discharging to those existing inlets, comes out to, for a 100-year storm event, because that's the issue that was raised, is that the downstream flooding, potential flooding from a 100-year storm may exceed the capacity of the existing pipes, which were designed as a 24-, 25-year storm. We've been, the analysis now shows that the 100-year storm that discharges off of our property into the existing inlets actually has a lower rate of runoff going into those inlets than the initial, original approved design of the system for a 25-year storm.
Let me just stop you there for a moment. When you say the initial, original approved design, are you talking about the initial design that we propose as part of this application? Or are you talking about the design of the existing infrastructure in the street?
I'm talking about the design of the existing infrastructure within the street that was as part of the original CAFRA permit of the whole waterfront area, specifically the pipes in this area, as well as any improvements that have been built from the original design that have been put in place within Ocean Avenue for the stormwater collection system.
And after augmenting your report to address the comments raised by Ms. Pace Goldman, can you just repeat your ultimate conclusion when it came to the 100-year storm event?
The 100-year storm, peak rate of runoff that exits our site has been reduced to a level below the 25-year storm that was originally designed and approved for the existing pipe system within Ocean Avenue. And also, we didn't just look at our site for the flow going to this basin. We expanded the drainage area to include the entire drainage area that was going to each inlet for, that consisted of some areas that were off-site to both the north and the south, as well as portions of the existing roadway that runoff, rainfall hits and drains to those inlets directly. So the total cumulative flow going to each inlet for a 100-year storm is less than the originally CAFRA-approved 25-year design storm for the capacity of the pipes.
Okay. And I just want to quickly go through Ms. Pace Goldman's report to make sure we've addressed her comments. Your testimony that you just gave addressed her comment on page four, number one, correct?
Correct.
All right. Number two, that was a question about time of concentration. In the report that you've submitted, have you reduced the time of concentration from 10 minutes down to six minutes?
Yes, we have.
And does that address the concern that Ms. Pace Goldman raised in number two?
Correct. It turns out the TR-55 has a requirement for use with that program, a minimum time of concentration of six minutes is to be used.
Is that the most conservative time of concentration that the program will allow you to use?
Yes.
And is that the time of concentration you have now used for your report?
We used it for, as a minimum, if times were less than six minutes. However, we did calculate the time of concentration for the drainage areas. And if the time exceeded six minutes, we used that number, and that has been provided in the report.
Okay. Number three, there was a question about roof leaders and sufficient capacity. How have you addressed Ms. Pace Goldman's third concern?
Certainly. The question was, the roof leaders, would they be able to handle a 100-year storm? They were designed for a 25-year storm. Do they have capacity for a 100-year storm? And if not, where would that runoff go? As designed, the pipes are flowing only 20% and 25% full off the roof for a 25-year storm, based upon the slopes that they were designed for. I did an analysis for the 100-year storm, and the pipes still only flow about 30% and 40% of the capacity of the pipe for a 100-year storm. So if a 100-year storm hits the, occurs, the roof leaders will convey that entire storm to the underground pipe system.
Number four, there was a question about pipe discrepancies and the sizes and slopes of the pipes. How's that been addressed?
The plans have two labels for, there are four pipes. I believe Ms...
Pace Goldman.
Pace Goldman just may have misread the plans. The laterals, the roof drains coming off the building are six inches and eight inches, and they are sloped at 3% and 5% respectively. There are also the two eight-inch pipes that come out of the underground system that connect into the inlets, and those pipes are sloped at 1.45% and 1.32%. So she was incorrectly referred to the eight-inch pipes connecting to the inlets, thinking those were the slopes of the roof drain pipes, which they were not.
Number five, six, and seven, if her report had questions about inlet capacity. I know you've already given your conclusion in testimony about how the numbers worked out, but what additional documents did you review to come to that conclusion?
So we did look at the original design and approved CAFRA stormwater report. It sized all of the stormwater pipes in the network. We also looked, we also performed a survey prior to the beginning of the design and submitting the application to the board and doing our analysis, which provided as-built conditions of the inlets and manholes along Ocean Avenue in the vicinity of the property for upstream and downstream connections to the storm system.
Okay. And number eight, there was a question about tailwater. Can you indicate how the report has been revised?
Certainly. We had gotten some comments from Ms. Pace Goldman previously discussing tailwater. A previous version of the report, we added tailwater into the design, submitted it back to the DEP as part of the CAFRA compliance process. They came back with a comment asking us to remove it and containing it as a free-flow condition. So the report has gone back to not using, or not providing tailwater in the analysis based on comments from the DEP.
Number nine, there's a question about the phase, the coordination with the walkways. How have you addressed that? Or how will that be addressed?
The walkway will be constructed as part of this project. And then obviously, coordination between this project, the boardwalk, and the city engineer will be ongoing throughout the entire process.
Okay. And there was a question under soils and infiltration about seasonal high groundwater and perched water. After reviewing the data that you have, how have you addressed Ms. Pace Goldman's concern?
So only one test pit that was submitted and performed in the area of the stormwater pipe showed a condition of perched water at five feet deep. That was test pit number five. It also identified a portion of a structure that was located below that as a bottom of pool. That pool is a, was not a pool of water. I believe she thought it may be, or could have been in her testimony, is actually, I guess, remains of a structural, the bottom of a structural concrete that remains on the site that will be removed as part of the development or broken up to allow water to come in if it's not underneath, directly underneath the stormwater system. The ground, we don't believe the perched water is indicative of the groundwater condition. Borings that were performed, as I testified originally during April of 2018, went down significantly deep on the site and noted that the water level on the site was 10 feet below existing grades. That equated to an elevation of two on the site, being that the testing and the analysis was done during the months between January and April. Standards allow the findings of the actual water table to be taken as the seasonal high water table for those months only. Outside of that, you would have to provide some additional documentation to, for where the water table is located. So based on this, the test pits did not find water to the depths they went to. The borings identified it during those months. And we've used those, that elevation of the actual groundwater as the seasonal high water table in this analysis.
Number three, if you recall, there was an exhibit that was presented by Ms. Pace Goldman that showed a blue area colored in the street. I think it was attachment C to her report. Have you reviewed that exhibit?
Yes, I have.
And what are your conclusions regarding that exhibit?
I believe Ms. Pace Goldman indicated that the volume identified or shown on her exhibit was the volume for the 10-year storm, that if the entire recharge system failed and the entire stormwater collection system in the street failed, that the area that she defined would be inundated with the 10-year storm volume. I don't professionally agree with that conclusion. The pipes in the inlets that we are connecting to are on the high end, the upper end of the entire system. So there's very little runoff that is in the pipes.
When you say high end, do you mean like top of the hill?
The beginning, the beginning of the stormwater collection system run. It's the upstream end flowing downhill, it's the most upstream point of the system.
Does that mean in order for it to fail completely, that the entire stormwater system for the infrastructure area would have to be completely full already?
Yes, unless, you know, unless there were some maintenance issues along the way. But if everything was pristine as it floods downstream and backs up the site, it would have to flood everywhere downstream before getting up to our property.
If you assume that recharge is possible in sand, and if you assume that the inlet system is functioning, would the conditions in attachment C in Ms. Pace Goldman's report exist?
I do not believe so.
Number four had to do with mounding. Can you explain why mounding analysis was not necessary here?
So groundwater mounding is an analysis of the rising of the water table underneath areas of infiltration and how it, the extent that it rises as well, both vertically and horizontally out from a, from an infiltration source above it. In the center of that mound will be the highest, because that's the direct, largest infiltration source above it. And as you go further away laterally from that initial source, the water will look like a small hump, essentially, and dissipating as water travels laterally away from that center point. Seasonal high water table here is down at elevation two. The bottom of our system is at elevation six. The volume of water that we are recharging is not a substantial amount of water. The nearest buildings on this are more than a couple hundred feet away to the north, or to the south, I should say, to the west across Ocean Avenue. We're looking 60 to 70 feet. With the depth to the seasonal high water table of four feet and the amount of water infiltrating, it is not expected that the mound will rise and extend laterally, because our system is really just a pipe system with some sand located further to the east, will extend laterally west significantly enough that would impact the surrounding properties, either to the west or to the south.
Just to break this down, when you talk about elevation, you have the building elevation, right? And then elevation 10, elevation two. Are we talking about below-ground elevations?
Below-ground elevations, correct.
So at elevation two, how many feet underground are you?
We are eight feet below the sand, the lowest vegetated, non-impervious surface on our property.
So when you say seasonal high groundwater, is that elevation two? That means the groundwater is eight feet below the surface currently?
Yes.
Okay. There was a question about capping, underground capping. Will we provide a detail showing the capping of the pipe?
Yeah, we'll provide a detail showing the connection of the roof drains into the underground system. A cap will be placed at the end of the system in accordance with the manufacturer's specifications to allow the eight and six-inch roof drains to connect into the underground system.
And comment number six, though, was about a maintenance manual. Will we agree to provide a maintenance manual as a condition of approval?
Yes, it is. It's a requirement as well.
Okay. There were general comments. Number one had to do with vines. Have you confirmed that the vines, the twining vines, will not interact with the, sorry, that the roots of the twining vines will not interact with the infiltration pipe system?
The infiltration system, the top of it is approximately four feet below grade. The vines, in speaking with the project's landscape architect, will extend, you know, one to two feet deep. So there will be sufficient separation that they will not impact the pipe system.
And then the second general comment in Ms. Pace Goldman's report was actually a repeat of one that you've answered about the walkway coordination. Ms. Pace Goldman indicated in her testimony that she had not been retained to do a full stormwater analytical analysis. Do you remember her testifying to that?
I do.
Have you performed a full stormwater calculation?
I have.
Has that been submitted to the board?
Yes.
And is that the set of calculations that have underlied your testimony today?
Yes, they are. Yes, it is.
That's all on stormwater. I have two housekeeping questions for you. Since you were last here, Mr. Keenan Hughes, the planner, testified concerning the rear fence line and how the plans had been revised to push the fence line in, in various locations, to provide landscaping on the site. Have your site plans been updated to account for that revision?
Yes, our plans now were revised back in November of 2019 to show the articulation of the fence along the boardwalk facade.
And one other housekeeping item. In your original plans, the construction phasing was shown on lot 1.24, and we had indicated that the plans would be revised to remove construction phasing from 1.24. Has that occurred in your revised plans?
Yes, it has.
And that construction phasing will occur on lots that are already part of the construction phasing for the boardwalk. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Those are all the questions that I have for rebuttal.
Anything from our professionals?
I have a question. I understand that you said that tailwater wasn't included, and I understand the reasons why. In your opinion, would that have a measurable impact on the stormwater? We had included on the previous analysis, and it didn't have any kind of substantial impact prior to not having it first time. So I don't anticipate any real change in the analysis if it was added back in. Thank you.
I just had one question. That, all of that was in regards to the testimony we heard from the other engineer. Thank you, Ms. Pace Goldman. And then the response to, from DEP, are we talking about that at all this evening?
So just as an update, the DEP had come back and asked us questions. We have resubmitted our answers to the DEP in response to their questions, and it is still under consideration. To our knowledge, they have not issued another round of comments, nor have they yet issued a decision one way or the other. But the same stormwater report that we submitted to this board is the stormwater report that went to the DEP. So you are reviewing the same document.
And so the questions, so this is the response that you submitted back to the DEP?
We were asked to copy the board as a courtesy to make sure you were aware that we were, in fact, complying with a condition we know if this is approved would be imposed, which is that we seek compliance from the DEP with the CAFRA permit. So we want you to know that we have been regularly responding to their questions and have been providing them information, and we wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. I just have a question about your testimony that, so you're at the high point. And did you say the pipes are at elevation six? Was that what you said?
I said the infiltration pipe that we are proposing, the bottom of it is at elevation six.
Okay.
And just for clarity, the inlet pipes that are in the street, what is their elevation?
The great elevations of those pipes are at nine and a half and 10, roughly.
Okay. And for clarification also, when you're referring to 25-year storm and 100-year storm, you're referring to a rainfall storm event? So was any analysis done in the case of a flood or storm surge event?
Not in terms of storm surge, no, only in terms of the 100-year flood, floodstorm, flood event, correct.
Anything else from the board?
Anything else from the board? Okay. Let's open it for public questions.
I guess it'd be Mr. Lieberman, I'm sorry, Mr. Lieberman's colleague.
Would you like to cross-examine?
I only have a few questions.
All right, come on up.
I don't bite, I promise. I do have a question about the mounding analysis that you just discussed. Are you aware of the New Jersey DEP's Best Management Practices Manual?
I am.
And for this project, would the mounding analysis be required?
To my knowledge, it's not a requirement. It is not a requirement, the DEP, from my, my experience, in stormwater rule, it's not a requirement per their regulations as of right now.
As of right now, but is, is it recommended in the manual?
I do know there was, there was discussions previously about incorporating mounding analyses into projects. I do, I have not heard if that has gone forward into any, anything other than basic discussions.
Shifting gears a little bit, talking about those inlet structures on Ocean Avenue, do you know what the constructed condition of those inlets are?
We did a survey prior to the initiating the design of the project that provided information of the grate and pipe inverts and sizes of the pipes within the, across the frontage of the property.
Is there any concern? Let me step back. Do you know when those were installed?
As far as I know, several years ago. I don't know the, I don't know the exact dates.
Fair enough. And do you have any concern as to the actual condition of those inlets since we're going to be directing stormwater into them?
I did during my initial walk of the property, prior to the survey being performed, did look at the inlets on the site and my recollection is that the inlets were not sufficiently silted at that time. That was back, obviously before the application was filed. I have not looked at it since, on the condition. If they are silted up, the inlets themselves, or it gets silted during construction, it would be a contract responsibility as they made the connection to clean those out prior to putting them into operation. But I do not know any, other than the inlet itself, I have not examined the existing pipes.
You just, actually, it's a good transition, I guess, to my next question. I know there was some brief discussion a minute ago about the maintenance plan. How would that work going forward? Like, you know, if there is silting, like you just mentioned, how would, who would be responsible to deal with that and how would that be done?
The maintenance plan would be for the maintenance and repair of the onsite facilities. The facilities that are located along, within Ocean Avenue are the responsibility, from my understanding and I believe the testimony was provided by Ms. Pace Goldman as well at last hearing, that they have the responsibility of the city.
The city. Could you just, because I know we walked through this quickly, could you just explain to me how you determine the times of concentration on, as you were discussing earlier today?
The TR-55 manual provides a means to calculate times of concentration for, for developments, either residential or commercial or any other type of development. It's based upon flows on three different criteria. Using that, their input and the guidance of a minimum of six minutes, the flows are calculated and the calculations are enclosed with the, how the calculations were done, the formulas used are enclosed within the report.
And I believe my last question, I believe you testified this earlier, has Mr. Sheehan responded to the information that you provided on the 16th?
The last round of submissions that we just sent in, I have not, we have not received any comments back as of yet.
And when you get comments, will you be sharing those with the board?
We have been providing the board with copies of our responses to the comments, which also include the comments as we've been responding and during this application will continue to do so if we receive comments back. So we get them back and as we respond, you get a copy of our response.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anything else from the board? All right. Let's open it up.
Do you need to submit a report into evidence?
It was submitted as part of the application package already.
I need supplemental report.
It was submitted as part of the, the application that went in on January 16th was the date. So I suppose we could probably provide you a list of all the various resubmissions, but this was resubmitted to the board 10 days in advance.
I'm just asking if you have something else to submit, that's all.
Today? No, there's nothing additional after the report submitted on January 16th.
Do we need to label it as an exhibit for the application?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to label it as an exhibit?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, well, if we, we have, just as a point of administration, we have not been labeling all of the site plans and reports that have been submitted to the board as a supplement to the application itself. We've been labeling exhibits that were not part of the application. So what we can do for clarity, and I think because there's been so many resubmissions, we can maybe submit one letter with all the cover letters so you could see in one place all the different resubmissions that we've had.
That would be fine and we would run it by Michelle, make sure that her records jive with what you sent in.
Correct.
Sure. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem. Okay. Let's open it up for public questions of the witness as of what was testified to within the last half hour of 45 minutes.
Motion, open cross-examination.
Good evening, Catherine Murphy.
Hi.
510 Deal Lake Drive. I had two questions. One, did I understand you correctly when you said that there had not been an analysis in the event of a storm surge?
Man, man, hold on a second. I didn't even catch your name. Somebody else was speaking on top of you.
Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drive.
Thank you.
And, and if we could just clarify for the record, who is or is not a member of SAW?
Yeah.
I'm a member of many volunteer organizations, including SAW. Did I understand you correctly when you said there had not been an analysis done in the event of a storm surge or hurricane severe northeaster?
Yes, you did. Our, our analysis was limited to the 100-year storm as the largest storm we analyzed.
Okay. And then another question I had, when the test borings were done in the early winter of 2019, I did take some pictures that day, was there more than one test boring done in, in more than one location? And where was the exact location of that test boring? Because the one I witnessed was not on the property of the proposed pool club.
The stormwater report, as well as the plans that were submitted, provide a plan showing the locations of the borings and the test pits that were, that are included in the report and used as part of the analysis. And they're all located along the front of the eastern portion of the property in the vicinity of the underground stormwater pipe that's proposed.
And there was more than one boring?
There were, there were three borings that were performed in April of 2018 and four test pits that were performed in July of 2018.
Okay. Thank you.
Next. No? Any other, any other questions?
Good evening, Pam Lamberton. Yes, I am a member of SAW. You testified, I believe, that this, the lot that we're talking about is one of the high points of, of the sewer, the stormwater system?
I testified that the, the inlets in the, along Ocean Avenue are the most upstream inlets within the collection system in, that drain downstream.
Where is the low point?
Low point, the, the pipes ultimately discharge to Deal Lake.
So the fact that the sewer plant was chosen for where it is, to be built where it is because that's the low point in the city, doesn't relate to, to your determination that this is a high point of this?
The relation to high points on, for a storm sewer, in, in my context, is where the, the direction of flow starts and ends along the storm sewer system. It starts in front of our site along Ocean Avenue and travels in a westerly and southerly direction and with an ultimate discharge in Deal Lake. The sanitary sewer system with the, with the treatment plant may flow in a completely different direction and their low point, which is draining more of just a portion of the stormwater of Asbury Park that we're dealing with, is a larger area would flow and it could flow in a different direction, discharge in different locations.
Okay. Okay. What is tailwater?
It is the elevation of water within a, a pipe system where water flows downstream. So when a, a connecting pipe system or flow, ties into that, would have an impact on how quickly the water could leave or get out of the upstream pipes and travel downstream. For instance, if a, let's say I have a 24-inch diameter pipe and the pipe is filled 12 inches with water, if you have another pipe that comes in only six inches above the bottom, there'd be six inches of water that would prevent the water coming out of the upstream pipe from going into it.
And that's called the tailwater?
That would be a tailwater effect, correct.
And that's not included in the calculation?
It was, it was previously, the DEP's based upon review, when we included it, asked us to remove it. My, my belief on why they asked to remove it is that the inlets we are connecting to are the ups, upstream most inlets of the system and therefore there's really, there's no water flowing through the pipes except the water that we are putting into the pipes originally. We're the upstream most flow coming into the pipes to start the system from upstream to go downstream.
This is mind boggling. The, of the people sitting up there, I know the attorney, who is the city engineer? One of those two people?
That, that, it's the planning engineer, our planning board engineer.
The planning engineer is there?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know who it is, the gentleman or the woman?
The gentleman on the end.
Thank you. Thank you. You maybe can help me with this. The original storm sewer system down on the beachfront was designed in like 2002, 2003 and it has cer, had a, built for a certain capacity. Does the storm drainage report, which was issued just a week ago, was that compared to the original city plan? What I'm getting at is does the drainage that was just, the latest calculations for the drainage?
Sorry.
Fit with the city plans that were built back in the 2003, 2004? And did you look at that?
Yeah, if, we'll have Mr. Delaney answer first and then I'll leave it to the board if their professionals should answer.
So as part of the, the revised analysis that was submitted, that's exactly what we looked at to, we looked at the originally approved design for the capacity of, sorry, what was approved flow going to the inlets as well as the capacity of the inlets back from the 2002, 2003 period, under the approved CAFR permit. Verified that information with the survey that we had performed prior to designing the site. We adjusted the flow going to those inlets based upon current precipitation values because they have increased since 2002. So we use current values for that. Calculated the flow based upon the approved coverages on the site. The areas were assumed to be 90% impervious and 10% non-impervious, grasses, sand, stuff like that, flowing to the inlets. And calculated what the new approved flow would have been as well as the, based on the slope of the pipes between the, the structures, what the capacity of those pipes would be out in the streets under existing conditions. We then analyzed our system using the same drainage area, adjusted the coverages based upon what we're proposing because our site is not 90% impervious. It turns out that the drainage areas wound up being about 50% impervious and 50, 50% pervious, reduction from the 90 and 10. Ran the numbers for a 100-year storm and instead of the 25. And the analysis showed that the rate of flow coming out of our site was less than what was approved for the 25-year storm back in 2002, using the updated precipitation numbers.
Wow. We, those of us who sign up for NICS will get these warning messages that there's a flood warning in Asbury Park. We get honestly at least once a month, sometimes two times a month. And it's, it's street flooding. So are, are you sure that this, that this system that you've designed for this particular lot and then the whole waterfront will alleviate or prevent that future flooding twice a month?
All I can say is that based on the pipe capacity that, that the pipes, as they are installed and the flow that would be proposed going to this, to these pipes, the existing pipes inlet to the, to the downstream structures would have sufficient capacity to handle our flow that would not cause any flooding resulting from this property in those streets.
Okay. Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, 1034 Sewell. Just trying to go through almost that same question that was asked. Well, what, the first question is, when was your analysis of the storm ward, the full analysis of the storm ward done?
The revised report was dated January 10th, 2020.
January 10th, 2020. Okay. Right now, you know, the level, levies in, in Louisiana, you know, they were supposed to meet a certain standard. And there was a question you said from the engineer's report that said if everything was working on both ends for capacity, there wouldn't be an issue. But in case there isn't an issue with those capacities not working, what type of damage would it cause to, say, North Beach? And if water backed up, how much damage would be done?
I, I don't, yeah, I don't believe Mr. Delaney could answer what would happen if there was a catastrophic, catastrophic failure of the city's stormwater system in its entirety. That's beyond what any applicant for any individual piece of property could analyze.
Yeah, it's not, it's not within the scope of his testimony.
Well, I mean, in, in the scope of the capacity is, he doesn't, he doesn't take analysis of, of whether the stormwater effect could affect a, a, a public property?
In the event of a total failure?
And not even saying a total failure.
He's already testified that he, what he's said.
Yeah, he said, that's what I'm saying.
Based on his calculations, the system can handle the water.
Yeah, and he said, he didn't think from the engineer, the other engineers, he didn't think that they, the other engineer was correct. So I'm saying, what probability do you give your analysis over that?
I can't, I can't predict damages or flooding downstream. All I can analyze is the impact my, this development and my analysis will have in the immediate vicinity and moving forward and moving downstream. And what I've shown is that the capacity of the pipes that was, that the pipes were designed for is actually a, has a larger capacity of flow than the analysis shows that would be discharging to those pipes. So if there is a condition that is not functioning now, or for some reason downstream of my system, I am not, I am actually decreasing the flow coming, we are decreasing the flow coming off our site that goes into the pipe network. So we will not be, we're actually providing a benefit to the system by, by having less water go into the pipes than goes there, than would go there as was assumed under the original approval. And if there is a, some issues downstream with flooding and for whatever reason, it may be a maintenance issue related to it and I'd recommend reaching out to the city to have somebody look further into it. Thank you.
Hi, Maureen Nevin, Deal Lake Court.
Maureen, are you a member?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you a member of the organization?
No, no, I don't belong to any club that would have me for a member, actually.
Sorry, just before.
Yeah, the gentleman before you, we forgot to ask him.
Yes, I do support. Yes, I am.
That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
What I'd like to ask is, did you meet with the Deal Lake Commission at all on, with your research and did you actually just speak with Peter Avakian, the engineer for that commission?
I have not.
And, well, does that mean that you also didn't take into account the flume and how that's operated in keeping the level of Deal Lake at a livable height?
I did not. The only thing I reviewed in relation to Deal Lake was the, the analysis that was approved as part of the 2002 CAFR permit.
2002, is, is that the latest CAFR permit?
That's the only one I'm aware of.
So there's been no permit issued since? So there's been no permit issued since 2002?
Not that I'm aware of, only compliance, letters from the DEP indicating compliance with that permit as applications move forward.
So there's been no coordination with the DLA Commission?
I have not coordinated with them.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Eden Moran, 08th Avenue. You mentioned the CAFRA report many times in your presentation. Could you tell us how old it is and what year it was issued?
So, just for the, first, if Mr., if you.
What?
Sorry, I can't, if you could just please put on the record whether you are or are not a member of SAW to start with.
Why does it matter?
I didn't get, I.
Why does it matter?
It matters in the sense of standing, and we had that argument.
No.
At the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you.
For an issue on appeal. We already had, we already.
I'm a 60-year resident.
Correct. So just to answer the question on the permit, Mr. Delaney was not testifying as to the substance of the permit or compliance with the permit, only that the DEP has jurisdiction to determine compliance and that we have submitted reports and comment letters and application, or I'm sorry, application materials to them so that the DEP can determine compliance.
So, does that mean you don't have one?
That we don't have one what, I'm sorry?
CAFRA permit?
There is an existing CAFRA permit for the entire waterfront, for all projects within the waterfront, and the DEP reviews each individual application to determine compliance with that permit.
Well, could we see it?
The permit, it's a matter of public record.
It's like the invisible piece of paper that we're looking for.
I, I don't have it with me today, but it is, it's a matter of record, it's a recorded document.
A matter of record?
How many, how many people?
Okay. The other thing I want to ask, when you talk about the inlet, you're talking about DLA, is that what you're talking about when you call it an inlet?
No, the inlets I'm talking about are the, the structures located along Ocean Avenue, the storm structures that are along the curb line where runoff flows during a rainfall event.
Just, and kind of in layman's terms, you talk about the storm sewer grates.
The storm sewer grates in the, in the roadway.
Well, the other thing, you're saying that all the water's gonna go into the sewer plant then, right?
I did not say that. The question was related to.
Well, that's what you just said.
No, the question before was related to high points and low points, and how, if I was a high point, how can the sewer plant be a low point? The sewer will connect into the existing sanitary sewer system within Ocean Avenue to invade where it needs to go, and the storm sewer is connecting to the storm sewer inlets and pipe system that flows down towards DLA. They're, they're two separate systems.
So the water's gonna go into the curb, right?
Water will flow, will hit, hit the land, will flow to the structures, curb, the inlets and grates located along the curb line along Ocean Avenue of the property frontage.
And go into the sewer plant, right? It's gonna go into a sewer, isn't it?
It goes into a storm sewer which then conveys water to the west and north for discharging into DLA.
And discharging into DLA, wow. It's hard to understand because you're an engineer, the only one I know that's an engineer is Werna, that understands all about the water flow and how it's gonna affect us. But isn't there a simple term like the other planner said, you drop a, a drop of water into the faucet and it, so many minutes it goes down? Can't you explain it like that?
So.
That if there's gonna be any flooding on Ocean Avenue?
I can't predict if, if there's, if storms exceed the 100-year storm, the inlet capacities, you know, may be exceeded. The analysis that we have performed shows that the flow coming off our site and the contributory area that flows when a drop of water hits the ground and flows overland to the inlets located along Ocean Avenue, the analysis we show, shows a reduction in, in flow for what was originally designed for those pipe systems that would then travel underground down towards DLA.
So getting back to the CAFRA permit, you don't have a date on that?
It, unfortunately, it's not in our control. The DEP is reviewing it, and whenever they are done reviewing, I'm sure they'll issue a decision. But we, we don't control when they issue a decision.
The, the original permit was back, I think about 2002.
And, and when?
About around 2002 for the entire, for entire waterfront area.
Excuse me, can we just please keep it to one conversation because we're hearing different people?
Well, he mentioned it in.
Oh, no, no, not, not to you. I'm talking to everyone else. No, 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 not to you.
Everyone but you.
Everyone but you.
No.
No.
He spoke up because I thought Zerpico was running the meeting. That's all I wanna say.
Okay, who's next? Oh, may I, if you, if you don't mind, can we have anyone that has not spoken yet, and then we can, I just wanna make sure everybody gets a chance, okay? You're welcome to come back up.
Andrea Goldman, 7th Ave, I'm not a member of SAW. How many 100-year storms are, is the system meant to withstand?
A 100-year storm is, is a storm for reference point. It's not a storm that happens once every 100 years.
Right.
It's a happens, a 1% chance of occurring every year. The systems were designed for a 25-year storm, the pipe systems through the streets, that's typical, typical practice for roadway collection systems. We, as part of comments from the, the engineer for, for SAW, as well as some comments that were received from DEP during our CAFRA compliance review, asked us to analyze the impacts of the 100-year storm coming off our site to those pipes. We ran the analysis and compared it to the 25-year storm, you know, and shows a reduction for the pipes that are immediately adjacent to our, our property. If multiple storms hit one after the other, it's not something that's modeled during the analysis. So we did not look into multiple 100-year storms happening on consecutive days or, you know, within a week's period of each other.
So you're saying zero, when places like Mississippi, for example, have had multiple 100-year storms within the past decade? So you're saying there haven't been any looked into?
I'm not saying anything about how many have occurred, I don't know.
You said 25-year?
I just said the pipes were designed for a 25-year, and our flow for a 100-year storm coming off our site is less than the approved, originally approved capacity for a 25-year storm as well as the existing capacity of those pipes.
Okay, so zero. And have you received comments that haven't been responded to?
We have, we received comments from the DEP that we just recently responded to and have not received additional comments back as of today.
Because, okay, so to clarify, because earlier, I think you guys were saying that you've publicly released comments that you've replied to. Are there comments?
No, the answer's no. We've, we have responded to every comment we have received from the DEP as of, I mean, the last time I checked my email was 5 o'clock today, so unless.
Are there comments from, that otherwise could be released from people who aren't DEP?
No, we have, no, we have not received any other comments yet from anyone except the board or the, the DEP regarding stormwater.
Is that the policy going forward? Like if you receive other comments regardless of whether you've replied, will they be made public?
I, just, just for clarity, we're not talking about comments as in like people writing letters or appearing at the planning board. The DEP in, in reviewing its application, in reviewing our application materials, made technical comments and requested more information from us, and we responded to those comments. That's what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoke, hasn't asked questions yet, please come up? Go on up.
I'm the first.
Go ahead, come on up.
Want to swear me in?
No.
No?
No.
Hi, Ernest Mignoli, 400 DLA Drive, Asbury Park. So this thing is like in my lap, just so you know, so I'm ver, and I'm not a member of SAW. But this thing, this project is in my lap, it's in my view, it's, it sort of affects the breeze I'm gonna get from the east coming into my bedroom and living room. It affects everything. So, so here we are. You're a civil engineer, correct?
Yes.
And specifically on this project, your site development, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As such, is the DLA or any authority of the DLA within 200 feet of any part of your project?
No.
It's like 225 feet probably.
It's about 700 to 800 feet.
700, 800 feet. But your project will discharge into the DLA?
Correct. Ultimately, stormwater runoff will, from the pipe system, travels south, west and south and discharges to DLA.
Okay. And I guess you are aware of DLA having serious issues with DEP problems, pollution actually being closed down, et cetera, a lot doing to surface runoff, et cetera. I mean, I go to the DLA Commission, they are just having endless problems with neighbors maybe three, four, five, 600 feet away dumping into the lake.
Is there a question?
Question.
Yeah, there is a question. So, so you, you wouldn't think that it would be in, in your project's best interest since Mr. Lieberman, the lawyer for SAW, is an EPA lawyer, and he's not here, he seems to always be on vacation when we get to these EPA questions. So I'm gonna try and do the best I can because what you stated is not correct, that you did all your studies based on quantity of water, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And isn't quality of water relative to your permit and EPA and DEP and OSHA and, and doesn't, doesn't quality of water?
I did, I did talk about it. Runoff quality, based on the stormwater regulations for the project, is not required for this project. However, as part of the entire waterfront redevelopment and infrastructure improvements that were done, water quality structures were installed within the streets of, of the waterfront redevelopment area for this direct purpose of capturing rainfall runoff and pollutants, filtering them before discharging to DLA.
So you're gonna filter them?
I'm not filtering anything, the systems are currently in place right now.
Is that the city system, you mean?
The water quality systems were approved as part of the 2000 CAFRA permit, and they were installed as part of the infrastructure upgrades for, for those, for those purposes to handle the development within the waterfront.
Did you say 2012 or 2002?
2002, sorry.
Okay. All right, so we're, we're dealing on an 18-year-old permit that conditions were different, the shoreline is different, the jetties are different, post sandy is all different, all the beach, et cetera, is all different, and yet you're gonna use calculations from something that doesn't exist anymore?
I'm using calculations that were approved by DEP. The DEP is currently reviewing the application for compliance. They have agreed that water quality is not regulated for this particular project, as well as groundwater recharge. The only thing we are dealing with for them is the runoff quantity requirements.
Okay, well, to me, it doesn't make sense. If DLA is under horrible scrutiny and really dealing with pollution problems from water runoff.
Questions, please.
And you're dumping into the DLA. My question to you is, you don't, you don't think it's relative from the source to the DLA?
I do think it's relative.
But you don't have to.
But the, the.
I get it.
Implementation has, the structures to treat the water quality have already been installed and are not required on a site-by-site basis, it's an area-wide basis.
I get it. Okay, the pool is above ground, correct?
Correct, nope.
I think we're probably getting outside the scope.
We're not talking about that?
That wasn't part of the testimony today.
Okay. All right. All, all the pipes that you install, let's say the wastewater sewer pipes that you install for the bathrooms or whatever in the, in that beach club, correct?
Again, wastewater was not part of the revised stormwater report.
He mentioned it, what do you mean?
Only to say that wastewater was not.
He mentioned the two types of sewage.
That it's not part of the calculations that he was testifying to today concerning the stormwater.
Well, wait a minute, he brought it up. He said that, so one sewer system is for waste and one is for stormwater. Can you answer about what he brought up?
It was not part of my testimony tonight, I was.
I wrote it down.
I was clarifying a question from another member of the public.
Okay, so you did or you didn't mention wastewater?
I mentioned in response to a question that was asked by a member of the public for clarification purposes only.
Oh, so I'm not allowed to question you on your answer to another person's question?
My testimony tonight was regarding stormwater design, not sanitary sewer.
I get it, okay. Relative to these comments that you mentioned about 10-year storm, 25-year storm, 50-year storm, 100-year storm, 500-year storm, correct? Can we pick any one? Let's pick a, I don't, what did you use, 25-year storm?
I analyzed the site for 100-year storm as, as was requested.
Okay, so here's my question to you. Let's just say today, right, at that site, even though it's not developed yet, doesn't matter, let's just say today, 100-year storm hits that site, correct? Let's just say, okay, now here's my question. Could a week later from today, another 100-year storm hit that same site?
Yes, in all probability, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Why, why, why do you think in your testimony that the public thinks when you make comments like that, that it means when we have a, Sandy was a what, a 500-year storm?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
It may have been even more than that, but anyway. Why do people think that once you have the storm, it's not coming for another 500 years? That's not true, it could come at any time. And you just, you just affirm that.
I don't think Mr. Delaney can.
So my point is this.
Question or answer what other people think.
Okay, here's my question. So now let's just assume that it happens, 25-year storm, and then a week later it happens again. How long do you, did you calculate that it would take for the ground to recover from the first one, and now the second one hits? Did you, did you calculate that?
I did actually from the onsite portion for the infiltration of our site, it's a requirement as part of the regulations to prove that the underground system, the pipe system will drain within 72 hours into the, into the underlying soils. Based on the analysis that was done through the programs and the inputs, the, the underground detention basin will be dry well before the 72 hours, it'll be about 20, 25 to 30 hours the entire, the pipe will, will drain into the underlying soils.
And when did you do that study?
I've done that since the original analysis.
Which was? You mean when this, when this.
March 12th, 2019 was the first report that was done, and it was included in that report, and has been included in every port, report.
So, so you've been onsite as a civil engineer since 2019, rigorously testing everything for site development and plan, and, and tonight you're talking specifically about storm flooding, is that correct?
Storm flooding tonight, yes.
Okay, so then you're nearby here a lot, right? I live near here. That area floods all the time. This season alone, we haven't had snow, but we've had torrent.
I think this is more of a statement than a question.
So here's my question, okay? I can't. Have you, have you seen the, the site this season with relative to flooding?
I have actually tried to come out here on, a couple times on rain events to see the flooding during the course of the hearings.
You couldn't get near it because of the flood, right?
And the days that I actually got here, the, I thought were substantial rain events that where they were predicting, I did not notice any flooding in the streets in the area. So either the day I came out was not the days you're referring to, or the intensity of rainfall was, was less than what was predicted.
Did you say the day you came out?
The days.
Oh, the days.
I have come out on a couple, a couple times driven by the site during rain events to check, to see if, what the impacts of flooding based upon comments that we had received during the hearings for this.
Are those logs available?
I do not keep logs for it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. As part of this rigorous investigation and civil engineering plan, you've come to the site during challenging rain conditions, and you can't tell us you didn't log it in? How?
I, I happened to be in the area for other purposes, and I drove by the site. It wasn't.
Okay, I'm not being sarcastic, but you, you came for a concert and you happened to check it out?
Nope, I wasn't, whatever reason, meetings or so, whatever, I was here. I can't specifically say the days in my head, but I have.
Just so, just so I get, I'm sorry.
Okay, so here's my question.
So, hold on, I'm sorry. There's no.
Here's my question.
Let me log my objection first.
Now, stop. Let the attorney per objection on the record.
There is no checklist requirement for Mr. Delaney to log every time he drives by the site. That's not a realistic requirement, it's not something this board requires. So the law.
I thought I was asking the expert, not the lawyer. Can he answer?
Ask, ask the question.
Do you think a log is necessary? You're a professional. I don't wanna hear a lawyer tell me an outfit you have. I'm asking you directly. When you went there, you said you went there days, minutes, this season. You mentioned having a permit.
The question was asked, it was answered.
Okay, let him answer.
I did answer, I said I did not take logs.
I, but now I'm asking you another question. Do you think it's? But now I'm asking you another question. Do you think it's important?
We've already accepted the professional credentials of the gentleman. I don't feel like this is a relevant question.
Everybody start, one at a time.
Thank you. Tell them. Do you think that it is required of a professional on a day that you're checking out an important project like this, that you not log it in?
Depends on the findings of the investigation.
But it's your testimony that you weren't even there officially. You were there as a concert or getting an ice cream, right?
The question was asked and it was already answered.
I know, but I can keep asking questions.
They have to be relevant. They have to be relevant to what was testified.
So you're saying to prove that he was there, he could state he was there 27 times.
He's under oath.
Excuse me?
He's under oath. Yes.
Yes.
What does that mean in Asbury Park? Are you kidding me?
All right, all right. Is there a question here? Please, please.
Serpico, you outdid yourself.
Oh, please. All right.
He's under oath. You've got to be kidding me. So again, I think it's critical, you don't, that you document those days?
This has been asked and answered and is not relevant and it is absolutely within the board's power to stop lines of questioning that are repetitive.
Do you have another question?
No, but I don't.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I didn't get an answer to that one.
Yes, do you have another question?
Thank you. Have you, recently, have you ever visited the site and seen it all flooded?
That's, again, that's been asked and answered.
He said no. He said no to flooding, correct? So now I'm asking him, when he ever went there, was it flooded?
He already answered that.
I did answer that.
Have you ever been there when it's flooded?
No.
Ah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know something? Thank you. You know, it's not easy getting a straight answer even though you're under oath. Excuse me?
Excuse me, please.
Thank you. The pool is, when you talk about draining the pool, yes?
I did not talk about anything about the pool today.
All right. Well, the pool drains through the wastewater sewer, right?
I did not testify to the pool today. It was strictly stormwater.
Mr. Delaney did previously have testimony and you were able to ask many questions at that time. These questions have been asked and answered.
All right. But did he bring up waste tonight? Waste sewer?
No.
Yes, he did.
Not on my testimony.
Okay, okay. All right. Not under direct, okay. Are you mentioned about when the water hits the deck and all the man-made materials there, that that water runoff is not subject to EPA scrutiny, let's say. It's only the quantity of water, correct?
I'm only required to design to address quantity impacts as part of the development.
Are any of the materials used in making this pool, its structure, its facade and all that stuff, are any of them man-made and have any toxic materials?
I did not testify to any of that.
Okay, all right. I get it. I get it. I get it. So you tested for a 25-year storm that this system, the pool, can handle it, the runoff, et cetera. Would that be relative to the kind of winter we've had or so far, fall and winter with the torrential downpours? Is that not considered a calculation? Because every time I go there, I mean, it's flooded. I have to wear my high-water fishing boots.
This is very repetitive. I'm sure there's other people who have questions and I would hate to see them not be able to ask their questions because of the repetitive nature of these questions.
I'm a homeowner, very close to this and a taxpayer, and for you, as an outside city winner, stopping me off is really unbelievable.
We need a question. What is your question?
How does she keep cutting me off?
Next.
Carol Jones, 1507 Bond Street. Is this a freshwater pool or a saltwater pool or a chlorinated pool?
That was not part of my testimony tonight.
Can they ask the question? Is it a chlorinated pool or a saltwater pool?
There was already testimony.
I wasn't here, I'm sorry. This is.
There was already testimony on that, that it was a regular freshwater, not a saltwater pool. But that was testimony that was.
So it'll be chlorinated?
It was not part of Mr. Delaney's testimony. There is testimony that was presented on that previously and fairly.
My only concern is if there is a storm and the chlorinated water gets washed into Deal Lake, it'll wipe out the fish and the life that lives there. And that would be a damn shame.
Just making sure, just, sorry, just one more time. Anyone else that has not asked a question yet, please be the next ones up? Okay, let's go.
Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drive. So the CAFRA permit that was issued in 2002 was based on what year flood maps?
The storm sewer system was designed based on a 25-year storm.
That's not what I'm asking. The permit, the CAFRA permit that was issued, which allows for all of this construction under the 2002 waterfront redevelopment plan, that permit that was issued in 2002 was based on what year's flood maps?
I don't know the date of those flood maps. I do know that the design today has been designed in accordance with the current, either the effective maps that are in place right now or the preliminary maps that have yet to be adopted. And I believe we designed it towards the preliminary maps and that is what raised the elevation of our finished floor to above 14 with a flood zone of 12 on the site, where the effective maps, I believe, are lower than that.
Well, they were actually issued in 1983 flood maps. So we are operating on a permit on flood maps that are.
These are not, I'm sorry, this is a comment, not a question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This will be fast. Did you say, did you testify that there's a big hunk of concrete in that lot?
The test pits that were performed struck a, what they refer to as the bottom of pool in one of the test pits, and that was located in the vicinity of the underground pipe that we are proposing. And I testified to previously and the plans reflect this, that all the material below that will be removed and replaced with a suitable sand material to allow for infiltration.
My question doesn't pertain to that. Is there a big hunk of concrete under there? The reason I'm asking is the Historical Society in Asbury Park has been looking for the new era concrete monument that stood on the beach somewhere in the north end, and it is lost, perhaps covered by sand. So as if, as you excavate, watch out for it?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Come on up.
Lynda Phillips, 400 Deal Lake Drive. I am an associate with the SAW member of people. I totally support them.
Question.
So I know I'm not allowed to ask about the pool, but this woman's question raised issue in my mind, which is if there is a huge storm in which the water from the pool comes out and needs to be drained through your system, is there a contingency for that in your stormwater plan situation?
So I do think there was previously, previous testimony on it, but I guess the question is, any of the water that hits the deck, what happens to that water?
That water will go through the deck into the underlying sand and through the anaerobic and aerobic processes through infiltration will be filtered before it gets to the groundwater. But it will not flow overland to the storm sewer system through the pipes into Deal Lake.
So if it's chlorinated water from the pool, it will go into the ground? Is that what you're saying?
It will go into the ground and be treated and broken down before it hits the groundwater.
Treated by what?
By the natural processes within the soils below the pool.
There's natural processes that get rid of chlorine?
It's the same as a septic system, same as anything that falls onto grass areas.
Whatever. I don't understand. Okay, thank you.
Felicia Simmons, 1034 Sewal, Asbury Park.
I'm sorry, I'm tired. Just quick. Felicia Simmons, Sewal Avenue, Asbury Park. Just a quick question.
Sorry, before you get to your question, are you a member of SAW?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm a member of SAW. My question is, just to, because you spoke about it briefly. So the city is responsible for the care of the system, correct?
For the maintenance and upkeep of the pipes and inlets and structures located within the public right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Anyone else? Any other questions from the public?
No.
We have, we have less than 10 minutes left. We have less, that's fine. We have less than 10 minutes left. Please go.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, there's no other person who wants to ask questions in the audience, correct?
That's right. Just wanted to make sure.
I'll use the 10 minutes.
Okay, so this is required, the last member of the public asking questions this evening.
This is it? Anyone else? I just want to know right now. We've got 10 minutes. Okay, one more. That's it. Your go.
Okay. Ernest McNoly, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park. So you're talking about the water now, correct?
No.
No.
You didn't just answer a question about water? The lawyer said the chlorinated water was going into the ground. You said it. So I can't talk about it now? You just brought it up.
No. Yeah, the questionnaire brought it up.
Correct.
He just responded.
Oh, I get it.
Yes, really.
So I can't ask anything about the chlorinated water? No, no. I want one of the lawyers, Mr. Serpico or the other lawyer, tell me that I can't ask about.
The questions have been asked and answered, not just today, but also previously.
Since that last question was answered, yes, the answer's yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So you said the chlorinated water, I guess the pool's emptied every day, but that's not the question. How is it being treated? You said anaerobic, you mean the ground itself is going to dechlorinate the water before it heads to the Deal Lake?
If water spills out of the pool, it will go through these slats into the soil underground and will be filtered through the soil before entering the groundwater. By natural processes.
Thank you. That's what I, by natural process. Can you tell me what natural process is?
The, there are microorganisms, from my understanding, I'm not an expert in this, there are microorganisms within the soil that live that break down chemicals, pollutants, oils, greases, things that travel from the ground downward towards the water table. And it's those processes that naturally break down these and clean them before they get to the water table.
All right, I'm in shock, but anyway. So you're saying there's bugs down there that are going to clean it up first?
That's my understanding in layman's terms, yes.
Okay. And who gave you that report? I'm sorry, I'll let the lawyer answer. Where'd that report come from?
It's not a report.
There's no, the clarification is there is no report.
You just testified that there's bugs down there that are going to clean it up. I asked you, where'd you get that report? I'd like to read it. I'd like to know what kind of bugs they are.
The report that was submitted to the board was a stormwater report. You asked Mr. Delaney a question and he answered it. There is no report other than the stormwater report that was testified to tonight.
And he's testifying that when the water hits the deck and goes onto the ground, there are natural organisms down there?
Your question has been asked and it has been answered.
Okay. You know, I have to use the 10 minutes.
No, you don't.
Why? You want to come up and say something? Well, who is that?
Do you have a question?
Whoever wants to, come on, here we are.
Ask a relevant question and you'll get an answer.
My questions are all relevant.
Oh, no, they're not. Ask the question.
For an in-towner, they are. For an out-of-towner, they're not.
Don't argue with me. Ask the question.
I'm not arguing, but I'm an in-towner, you're an out-of-towner. Thank you.
Is there a question?
Okay. They keep interrupting me. Did you calculate in that the sewer system right next to this project often overflows, fails, et cetera? Toxic air is going to be coming onto your pool because anybody who lives near there, I mean, what are these people going to do when that smell invades the pool? How are they going to get out of that box?
That was not part of my testimony tonight.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I asked the question. Sorry. But it does smell down there bad. Okay, so, so, excuse me?
Excuse me, please, one person speaking.
Just ask your questions of the witness. Let's go.
That's right. Come on.
So is it your testimony that the water that gets filtered off the deck is going to go through, get filtered naturally, and then it's going to find its way to the Deal Lake?
I did not say that.
Okay. Did you say something similar to that?
I said it will go into the groundwater below. Only water that, from the surface that flows to the inlets will go to Deal Lake directly.
So isn't that what we're talking, that water that hits the deck is going to go into the ground, cleaned up, and find its way into the water table and either go in the storm drains or underground in the water table, go into the Deal Lake? No?
If it migrates that far, I can't tell. I don't know the path of the groundwater.
Didn't you testify that it drains away from the site?
I testified that the storm sewer inlets drain away from the site, not the groundwater.
That's where the groundwater goes, into the storm system.
No, the surface water, the surface water goes to the inlets, not the surface water runoff from rainfall events.
It's your testimony that this water we're talking about is not going to go to the Deal Lake?
I think Mr. Delaney gave significant, complex testimony that cannot be summarized in a four or five-word sentence and that his testimony has been put on the record.
I'm looking for an expert opinion, not a legal opinion.
And Mr. Delaney has put his expert opinion.
Counsel has a right to represent her client and she has a right to interpose objections.
You mean to interrupt me?
That is correct. If that's the way you want to characterize.
Thank you. Okay, I'm glad you admitted she interrupts me. Thank you.
I characterize, no, I don't admit anything. I characterize it as an objection.
You just said it.
I said if that's the way you want to characterize it. I didn't say I characterized it that way, okay? So let's just keep going. Let's ask the questions.
I'm trying.
And let's keep this as a legal proceeding. Go.
Go ahead. Come on.
Look, now I can't compete with this gentleman over here.
I know, please.
I can't compete with you.
No disruptions, please. Go ahead. Go ahead. No.
Look, I want to have you removed if you keep arguing with me.
Go ahead, yes. No disruptions, please. If you have something to say, it's over here. Come on, any questions?
All right, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Expert Civil Engineer, so it's your testimony that it came up in another meeting that right now, tonight, I can't ask you if any of the water somehow from the runoff, from the deck, finds its way into the Deal Lake by any means? You can't answer that tonight, or you shouldn't answer. Either way, either legally you shouldn't or as a civil engineer you don't want to, or the board doesn't want to let me ask it, or the lawyer's going to interrupt me. But either way, is there any way that that water gets into the Deal Lake?
I can't say that it won't, but it will go into the groundwater. It will not, it will not into the storm sewer system, it will hit the groundwater, and I cannot predict the, I do not have an analysis of the groundwater flow to determine whether it goes towards Deal Lake or not.
All right, here's my last question. Nope, no applaud. Would you consider making more visits and logging them in? Because you're in the process right now, getting your approval, your DEP, a lot of things going on now. Shouldn't you keep records?
The analysis I provided, in my opinion, provides enough information that this development will not increase or result in additional flooding on the street and in fact will improve conditions because the flow coming off the development will be less than what was originally designed and anticipated.
You know, I think that's eloquent, except one thing, you're not answering my question. Along with that, wait a minute, along with that analysis, professional, which sounds stellar, you think you could put dates and times on it?
We will not be submitting a further report. This was the last report.
So we're going to accept one that we don't know when it happened. It could have been when he was at the, see here now, we don't know when it happened. Hello.
All right, we're at the, we're at the end of our meeting. Thank you very much. We're going to, I'd like to make a motion in order to carry this application without notice to February 3.
Do you want to say it's fully ready? Or do you want to have that filed?
Any seconds?
Move, move to carry without further notice to February 3rd meeting.
Cross-examination, was that the last question?
We are, I'm sorry, yes, we're closing out public comment, public questions.
Okay, this witness.
I'm sorry.
Correct. And just for clarification, we don't intend to bring another witness, so that is the end of our presentation.
Okay, so you're finished with witnesses.
And I believe that was the end of SAW's presentation.
And I believe that was the end of yours also. Okay.
So I, I would imagine that at the next public meeting, we will be moving straight to the public comment period.
That's correct. The next meeting is going to be only public comment, three minutes, one time around. That's what's, that's what we're going to be, and the timer will be going. So please be concise with your questions, I mean, with your comments, please. Bring them all, bring them all, but please, concise, three minutes, one time around.
Should, should we consider a bigger venue?
We haven't had to have one yet.
Correct, but I think the next meeting's going to be much more attended than this meeting.
Mayor, I would, I, I would, the reason I, the only say, I say no is.
I'm asking the board, I'm not asking you.
But if I could just interject on that, it's because if you're going to carry the meeting to February 3rd, you have to do so tonight and on the record.
Yes.
And I would imagine at this point, no one knows the availability of other rooms.
You have to have a date time in place.
Correct. So the date time and place that you could carry to tonight would be February 3rd here.
Okay, and you're absolutely right, and I'm going to make, if this room capacity's 150 and 170 show up, and it's not changed beforehand, I'm going to make the motion that it be adjourned and delayed again, just because I'm not going to let 20 people not be part of this process, because we didn't have the foresight to have it a bigger venue.
We, we have to carry to a specific date, time, and place.
Okay, so if we carry this to February 3rd here.
We're here.
If everybody can't get in, I'm going to ask that it be canceled, because it's not fair to the public that it's gone through this for nine months, that want to come and ask questions.
The, the alternative also is to allow people to, there's, if everybody gets three minutes, the alternative is that the people do show up, that they'd be allowed to start their three minutes. But we can, we can concern that on February 3rd.
Right, and perhaps SAW can give us some guidance on that, as far as what they think it is, and anything, if they could give us a better estimate of how many people, but again, I see other towns not have the capacity, and what they've always done is adjourn the meeting, because it's not fair to shut the public out.
That's, as long as, this, this meeting will be carried to February 3rd, so everyone here knows that February 3rd, here in this room, 7:00 PM, so I have the timer right? Yes, okay.
Yep.
You consent to any extensions?
I will consent to an extension through February 3rd.
Motion to carry the application to February 3rd without further notice.
All right.
Aye.
Motion to close the meeting?
Most to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
No, I, I.